Good morning. Due to COVID-19, Committee of Adjustment public hearings are being conducted virtually through WebEx Webinar, an online digital platform and streamed on the Toronto City Planning YouTube channel. Participants who registered in advance will be able to make their presentations to the committee using WebEx Webinar, which is moderated by city staff. Anyone wishing to view the hearing can watch on YouTube. Participants who registered in advance will connect to the hearing by phone or with a compatible electronic device and have the option of participating via video or audio only. Participants will be muted automatically upon entry. When your item is called, each participant will be unmuted by the moderator, one person at a time. Please mute your devices until you are called upon to speak. Those participating by video will be temporarily upgraded to panelists when their item is heard. During this time, your camera will be enabled. You will only be visible during your five-minute allotted speaking time, and at all other times, your video will be disabled and you will be reinstated as an attendee. Committee of Adjustment staff will share presentations submitted in accordance with the written submission deadline. Members of the public and applicants are not allowed to use the share screen or any other panelist controls during a video appearance. The host will remove you from the panelist role if you fail to respect this instruction. My name is Nancy Omen, and I will be chairing this hearing. Panel members participating via WebEx Webinar who can be seen and heard are Larry Clay, Zaheer Bayat, and Carl Niffler. We acknowledge that the land we are meeting on is the traditional territory of many nations, including the Mississaugas of the Credit, the Anishnaabe, the Chipewa, and the Haudenosaunee, and the Wendat peoples, and it is now home to many diverse First Nations, Inuit, and Métis peoples. We also acknowledge that Toronto is covered by Treaty 13 with the Mississaugas of the Credit. In accordance with Sections 45 and 53 of the Planning Act 1990 as amended, this meeting of the Committee of Adjustment for the City of Toronto is called to order. The Committee of Adjustment considers applications for variances from the provisions of the zoning that apply to the property, permission to extend or alter lawful nonconforming uses, and consent to sever property to create new lots. Anyone in attendance today who wants to receive a copy of the decision of the committee on an application must submit a written request by email. Please include your name, address, and an email address. Committee of Adjustment and the Toronto local appeal body will be sending notifications and appeal updates by email. If you do not agree with the decision of the committee, you may be able to appeal the decision to the Toronto local appeal body known as T-Lab, or in some limited circumstances, to the Ontario Land Tribunal. However, the provincial government recently amended the Planning Act and generally removed the right of third parties to appeal Committee of Adjustment decisions. As of November 28, 2022, only the applicant, the Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing, specified persons, and public bodies, as those terms are defined in the Planning Act, are permitted to appeal decisions of the Committee of Adjustment. Appeal instructions are set out at the bottom of the decision of the committee. I will call each item in the order listed on the agenda. Where an application is uncontested, the agent or applicant may proceed with their presentation if desired, and when the committee does not require a presentation, applicants are to advise the chair should they wish to speak to the committee. The committee may ask questions and/or take the matter into committee for a decision. Each speaker, including the applicant or agent, will be given a maximum of five minutes to address the committee, and I will comment when you're reaching the five-minute mark. When addressing the committee, please speak slowly and clearly state your name and address. Please remember to confine your remarks to the matters outlined in the application. The applicant or agent will proceed first with the presentation of the application, and then individuals either in support or opposed to the application will be invited to speak. Committee members may ask questions of each speaker after they have finished their presentation, and when all speakers are finished, the applicant or agent has an opportunity to rebut only those issues that were raised by the speakers. This will mark the end of the discussion. The application will then be taken into committee for a decision. Please note, the committee may not entertain revisions to proposals at the hearing today. The committee may decide to defer the application if substantially revised to ensure the revised application is accurate and that all those entitled to notice of the application are informed of the changes. Madam Deputy Secretary-Treasurer, are there any minutes to confirm?
Through you, Madam Chair, yes. April 19th, as well as April 26 from Panel A and April 26 from Panel B.
Okay, panel members, so we have two sets of minutes to confirm.
Oh, I'm sorry, three? Yes, through you, Madam Chair, three sets of minutes. One from April 19th, and then two from April 26.
Oh, two, I'm sorry, I didn't catch the two. Okay, so three sets of minutes we are approving today. So can I have a motion to confirm the minutes? So that's moved by Mr. Niffler. And do I have a second or? Okay, seconded by Mr. Bayat. All in favor? Okay, that carries. Are there any declarations of interest this morning? Mr. Niffler?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I have a potential conflict on 171 Durant, which I believe is number nine. I own properties within the Circulation District.
Okay, so, all right, so item number nine, 171 Durant. Mr. Niffler has a conflict. Anyone else? Okay, seeing none. Are there any files to be closed this morning, Madam Deputy Secretary-Treasurer?
Yes, through you, Madam Chair. We do have two. One is a previous deferral, 271 Glen Manor Drive East. File number A1047/20TEY. The applicant no longer wants to proceed with the application.
Okay, so panel members, this is the item that's not actually on the agenda, 271 Glen Manor Drive East. Can I have a motion to close this file? Mr. Bayat, do I have a second or? Mr. Clay, so moved by Mr. Bayat, seconded by Mr. Clay to close the file. All in favor? That carries. Any other files to be closed?
There is another one for the afternoon, item 25, 344 Dawnlands Avenue.
Okay, and we can close that this morning, or should we wait till this afternoon?
I believe so. We don't have any registered speakers for that one.
Okay, so, item number 25 is to be closed. That's 345 Dawnlands, that's in the 2:00 PM time slot. Do I have Mr. Niffler and seconded by Mr. Bayat to close the file? All in favor?
Hello, you reached Jesse Darby.
That carries unanimously. Okay, any items to defer in the morning time slot?
Yes, through you, Madam Chair, there are two. Item number 2, 13 Woodcroft Crescent, and item number 12, 26 Calendar Street.
Okay, well, I have speakers for item two, so I'd rather... Item 16, I don't. 12, sorry. I don't. So I think we'll close item, or we can defer item 12, and then maybe the second one, we can go in order, if that's okay. Okay, so do you have the agent for item 12 on the line? Yeah, Deepak Kular?
Deepak Kular, you've been unmuted?
Hello, good morning.
Mr. Kular, can you just identify yourself for the record, please?
Yes, my name is Deepak Kular.
And you need a deferral?
Well, to be honest, I would like to speak for one minute because I was requested by Planning to defer.
Right.
So can I take that minute now, or?
So is that because you don't agree with the deferral then, or? Yeah, I can give you one minute.
I don't want to...
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, yeah, so basically, it's an application to convert a vacant house into seven units. So the owners purchased the property vacant, it's been vacant. But Planning, I submitted this application in January, and I got an email from Planning last week, and it has to do with the displacement of tenants, because I believe at some point, this was a rooming house, but it's been vacant. The owner purchased it vacant. So there's concern about displacement of tenants, but there are no tenants and there haven't been. And so there's a little bit of...
If I can just stop you there, because this committee doesn't deal with tenant issues. We only deal with the variances before us. So it's up to you. If you want to go ahead with the application, then I'll just put you back in order of the application if you don't want to do the deferral.
Okay, yeah, I think, I think we'll be okay to go ahead, just because of timing.
All right, so I'm going to just put you back, and, because we're going to go in order of the agenda then, okay?
Thank you.
And thank you. Okay, so let's start with item number one, which is 1726 Dundas Street East. We have before us a copy of the plan of surveys, side plan, floor plans, and elevations. We have one photograph of trees on the subject property, presentation materials from the agent. We have a staff report from Community Planning, and they're asking for conditions, forestry is asking for condition number one. We have a letter of concern from the councillor, correspondence in support from residents on Gerard Street East, 1281, and 22 Burtmount, 74 Strathcona, 331 Ashdale, 494 Eastern, and 109 Rhodes Avenue, and four form letters in support from owners, occupants on Dundas and Ashdale. We have correspondence in opposition from 49 Hurdle Avenue, 1724, 1734, 1730, 1742, and 44 Dundas Street East, as well as someone else on Dundas Street East that didn't provide an address. 48 Highfield Road, 33 Hurdle, and that's... And then a 19 signature petition in opposition, signed by owners and occupants on Highfield Road, Hurdle Avenue, and Dundas Street East. Okay, I'm showing eight opposition speakers. Do we have all of them?
Through you, Madam Chair, I have seven of the eight registered speakers. I've tried contacting one of them, and they did not respond.
Which one am I missing, then?
The person who could not connect was Jesse Darby.
Okay, thanks. Okay, do I have the applicant, the agent on the line?
Craig Race, you can unmute yourself.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Craig Race, architect and applicant.
Okay, Mr. Race, we've got seven opposition speakers, so I need you to do a presentation, no more than five minutes. Is there anything you need staff to put up on the screen?
Yes, presentation material, please. Thank you, Madam Chair. The application before you is for a three-story, five-unit home fronting onto Dundas Street East in Leslieville. Next page, please. Project focuses its massing on the south side, facing Dundas Street, while providing step-ins on the north and in order to reduce perceived massing and improve sun exposure to adjacent rear yards. A critical aspect of the design was creating usable outdoor space for each unit in a way that would avoid privacy and overlook concerns. This mostly affected the private patios provided for the two upper units, which were stepped in from all sides of the building and concealed behind solid guards, a design we created through collaboration with City Planning. Next page, please. If we zoom out, the site fronts onto Dundas Street East. Dundas is one of few commuter streets through Leslieville. It is designated as a major street in the official plan and a suitable location for density when compared to the quieter internal neighborhood streets elsewhere. Next page, please. The site itself is relatively deep. It has a quasi-laneway in the rear, which is simply a shared easement used by the neighbors for parking access. Next page, please. There are eight variances in total for this application. I'm pleased to answer questions for any of them. However, I'll briefly note, the soft landscaping was maximized. However, the shared right-of-way prevented us from complying with this. This is typical for all properties that share the right-of-way. Also, we designed the entrances so that only one front door is visible from Dundas Street. Next page, please. The building is only about four inches above overall height requirement. That's less so the case for main wall height, but goes to indicate how close we are to a typical height. And also, when analyzing FSI for nearby committee approvals, there are many projects that substantially exceed the statistic we're seeking. Next page, please. We undertook an exercise to study the impacts these variances have on shadow. The study on the left is for a fully-as-of-right multi-unit home. Note that our shadow impact is only very slightly different than what the bylaws permit and simply results in a simpler construction format than if we were to comply. Also, note that the shadow cast doesn't even cross into the right-of-way, let alone the properties to the north. A full-sun study is included in the appendix, which indicates this is the case for all hours of the day. Next page, please. The owners who live nearby canvassed the area indicated by the green properties. Further, consultation was undertaken with City Planning, which led to several design revisions. Note that staff are supportive of the project and have encouraged the committee to include a condition that would tie us to certain drawings in an effort to protect overlook and privacy concerns. This is something we expected and agree with. This is also feedback we received from the councillor, which is expressed in her letter, and we believe is a suitable means for approving the project while also protecting the concerns of the councillor and the neighbors. Next page, please. To conclude, multi-unit houses are an established pursuit of City Planning and City Council's efforts to expand housing options in neighborhoods. But even before the explosion of the EHON efforts over the last few years, five units have been permitted use on this site for as long as I've been a practicing architect. Every site in this neighborhood, including the quieter internal streets of Leslieville, have permissions for multiple units, just like this project. But I would posit that this site is a more ideal location than you would typically find for a project of this nature, and I hope our efforts to create thoughtful housing will only underpin Leslieville's high-quality housing stock. This is a transit-connected, walkable, bikeable neighborhood, and this site is ideally located to focus new housing on a major street. It will complement the vast array of housing typologies already established in Leslieville and continue Toronto's efforts to infill rental opportunities where we need them the most. Thank you for this time, happy to answer any questions.
I think we'll hold our questions until we hear from the opposition, and then we'll have you back. Thank you. So if I can have the first speaker?
Kim Defoe, you can unmute yourself.
Ms. Defoe, are you there?
Hello?
Hi, is this Kim?
Hi, yes, it is.
Hi, Kim, can you just identify yourself, name and address for the record, and then you have five minutes.
Okay, thank you. My name is Kim Defoe, and I'm the owner of the adjoining property at 1724 Dundas Street East.
All right, go ahead, we're starting the clock now.
Okay, so we are opposed to the proposed project as is, and we submitted our letter on April 21st. I don't think that this is an example of modest densification. It's not unassuming, moderate, small, or limited. All you have to do is refer to the plans submitted and look at the size of variance being requested. We're not the only residents voicing our opposition. We have a letter from Paula Fletcher, Forestry, a signed petition, and several other neighbors will be presenting. With respect to the four tests, the variances are not minor in size or impact. You're privy to those numbers in the documentation, the examiner's notes. The square footage is going to go from 1,730 square feet to 3,829 square feet. I know that the applicant says, or is arguing, that this footprint or floor space index has been approved commonly by the COA in our neighborhood. However, all of the addresses they presented or provided were detached homes except for one. One property has been an empty lot for over eight years. The other was a large industrial building that was formerly an alcohol detox center. And I feel like you have to kind of consider, if you're going to increase the FSI, it should be very site-specific. We are a semi-detached home. They refer to, you know, the height of this new build being typical. However, it is going to be 3.21 meters and 2.9 meters taller in the front and the rear. It's an immense building, you can clearly see that in the plans. It's going to provide direct sightlines into our bedrooms from the balconies. Our yard will be cast in shadow, we'll have limited sunlight, and we'll have to stare at this gigantic black wall. The pedestrian entrance in the front is not permitted according to zoning, and again, the owner proposes that this type of access is, has been sought and is prevalent throughout the city, but I would argue that it needs to be site-specific, and you must take into account the very limited frontage on our property. Softscape is reduced. They want to actually do an addition on the front, which is to accommodate their secondary suites, which I, from what I understand, is not permitted. And the floor space will increase, I think, by like 78%. It'll be 78% bigger than it's supposed to be. Basically, if the general intent of the zoning bylaw is to maintain an appropriate relationship between homes and a neighborhood, the above variances should not be approved. The proposed build is not an appropriate development for this site itself or desirable for our neighboring properties. This major construction will take place between two existing homes. We are semi-detached, and our neighbor to the east is only a bungalow. I know that the city is growing and changing, and the bylaws are changing to promote secondary units, but this is not modest densification or responsible neighborhood-focused growth. Five units is quite an overreach and quite a concern. According to the plan, the city plan, new developments need to respect and reinforce the general physical patterns in a neighborhood. And finally, yes, the home, my, my house is on a major street, but the homes, both on the interior streets and on Dundas, are predominantly bungalows and two-story homes. Dundas is a busy street, but, and is designated as major, but if you compare it to multi-use designations like on Queen Street and Gerard Street, there are multi-unit housing units on those particular streets. This would be out of the norm on Dundas. Our stretch is primarily residential. Thanks for your time and consideration, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Panel members, do you have any questions for the speaker? Hey, thank you, Kim. If I could have the next speaker, please?
Ryan Link, you've been unmuted.
Hi, my name is Ryan Link, can you hear me?
I can, if you can just state your address for the record, and then you have five minutes.
My address is 1734 Dundas Street East, which is two doors down from the property. I'm also the property owner of the adjacent adjoining property of 27 Hurdle Avenue.
Okay, go ahead.
All right, so I object to this application as well. From what I can hear, there's been, there's been no community engagement with any of the neighbors or joint properties, regardless of what the property owners have said. No one has ever knocked on our door, and to this date, the applicant has never offered to engage with the neighbors to address any of the concerns that the community may have with this. We have, the letters of support attached to the documents here are from properties outside of the outreach area. Not a single one of them is within the area. And they're from carefully selected individuals that have similar vested interests at most likely to this property, for example, other multiplexes and things of that sort. Or they may have pre-existing personal relationship with the applicant, as can be noted by the dates on most of the signatures, being before the notification packages were even sent out to the community. Which can suggest that these documents are submitted only intended to undermine the COA process for the residents that actually object to this type of build. We have multiple letters of objection from a significant number of the affected property owners, including the local city councillor. It's way too big and inappropriate for the residential block on which it is located. My property, which is the second door to the east, will be entirely cast in shadow. They didn't talk about the azir bright design, but I'm not a professional in this area. It seems as though the azir bright design would also require an approval for FSI to be able to cast the same shadow, and how they are depicting it there. The variances are definitely not minor in nature and are a direct contravention to the bylaws that are intended to keep homeowners and communities safe from this type of activity. That is all I have. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Any questions for the speaker? All right, thank you, sir. Oh, and Ryan? Because I showed, I showed Terracita, were you speaking on behalf of both of you?
No, I was speaking on behalf of myself.
Okay. All right, do you have the next speaker, then?
Terracita, you've been unmuted.
Good morning. I am Terracita Link with, at 1734 Dundas Street East, and I am also the owner of 27 Hurdle that runs behind the proposed development. I do object to this development. I echo everything that's already been said, and I just wanted to add a few more, a few more points. The, the houses that were listed in there in the, in the immediate area with FSIs that were larger, I know Kim has already pointed out a few things, but I also wanted to mention that many of the ones that they have on here, not only are they detached, but they're also on, you know, postage-sized lots, which you would assume that the FSI would be larger on. Some of them are only 32 by 30-foot lots. 65 by 42 lot, of course, the FSI is going to be higher on those ones. Carefully selected, obviously, without, you know, just an address. And you don't have the benefit of knowing all the details of those properties that are often beside laneways or with no neighbors behind and those kind of things as well. Touching point on a couple of other things about the, the variances, you know, the four tests of the variances being minor. There are so many points where they are not minor. The, one of the things that I know has been mentioned in a lot of our letters, but I wanted to bring up is that the, the front of this property, this corner specifically, is prone to flooding. The sidewalk there is already restricted because there is a light pole on the corner. Because this is a well-traveled area, both kids going to school, people going to Greenwood Park, and we have many members of our community who require accessibility, have accessibility rights. You know, we've got a number of elderly and people in wheelchairs. That corner is already hard to pass by with the flooding that happens there already. But now you're going to take away the soft landscaping, plus the addition on garbage days of an additional eight bins between garbage and compost bins. It's going to make it completely inaccessible to strollers, wheelchairs, walkers, anything like that. Not to mention the added snow and stuff in the area, and we have nowhere to put it as it is, taking away from parking spots on the road that are also going to be more limited with the additional people in these units. You know, the four major tests of the committee, we've already talked about the, how much they're going over in their variances, but one of the biggest points about the, it being appropriate and matching zoning in an official plan is that it's, it needs to be harmonious with the characteristics of the neighborhoods, and they're predominantly semi-detached and bungalows. Yes, we have multi-units that typically don't go more than three units. Five is very uncommon, and those that are, are detached on corner lots. Also wanted to point out, so Darby is not, Jesse Darby wasn't able to jump on today, but he did ask me to bring up his concerns. They are the neighbor directly to the east of this proposed development, and they are part of our indigenous community, and they feel that this build with the shadowing that's going to be cast over their backyard is going to infringe on their rights to use their land to grow some of their sweet grass and things that they grow, as is their right as part of our indigenous community. The other big point is that there's a lot of old water streams running through this area, which we all know, and now taking up more of the soft landscape as well as what it's going to do to the waters that run through the area, the foundations in the neighboring property, and where all that extra water is going to go. And there's concerns with us neighbors that it might impact our, our properties in that way as well. This is a heavy burden, as mentioned by councillor Fletcher. This is a heavy burden on the attached property as well as the neighboring properties. It's a precedent we don't want to see set for a semi-detached house. Seems more suited towards a detached house. It's not a precedent we want set in our community of single-family homes, two-story, and bungalows of creating a monstrosity of a build attached to another smaller house. And the, 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 the other point I wanted to say is, you know, Craig mentioned at the start that he wanted to reflect the neighbors' concerns in his building, but he hasn't spoken to a single one of us. Nobody within his outreach area is supporting this development, and all of the support he has seems to come from outside areas that obviously have a different connection with him. Thank you very much for your time today, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Panel members, any questions for the speaker? Okay, seeing none, thank you, Terracita. If I could have the next speaker? Okay, seeing none. Thank you, Terracita. If I could have the next speaker, please.
Walter Hollick, you have been unmuted.
Mr. Hollick?
Hello, good day.
Hi, can you please state your name and address for the record, sir? And, uh, then you have five minutes.
Walter Hollick, seventeen twenty-two Dundas Street East. I am the son of the property owner. My father and mother live in the, in the property as, as well as I do. Um, they are handicapped. My father does have a wheelchair designation for his vehicle on the side street. With a build of this size going to five units, it is very unusual, um, to have this many units condensed into a single deta- into a semi-detached home. I also work in the trades, so I have a little bit of a different opinion of what's going on. How is the infrastructure going to be supported with the plumbing, with the fire protection? How are the residents of seventeen twenty-four going to be protected against any of these things? Is the builder going to be increasing the size of the service to the home? Because of that amount of units, you have a lot more infrastructure to deal with within the unit. The watershed is another thing. We do have underground streams as, uh, previously stated by Ms. Terracita. There is an underground stream that crosses right across the front of my parents' home. And it goes right down the street. How is that going to be affected when they do this build? This is something that we were not polled about, as the designer had said. We had a package delivered to our home with a letter, uh, blank letter of approval to support the build. It's a five-unit home. This is not acceptable for this neighborhood. We do not approve. We do not want this in the area. It does not apply with the lifestyle that this community has enjoyed and sustained over the number of years. This is, this is unacceptable. They have, the builder has, has gone beyond what he wants to do. He wants to take a semi-detached home and put it into, and turn it into a rooming house. This is unacceptable. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for the speaker? Seeing none. Thank you, Walter.
Bela Rosenbaum, you have been unmuted.
Hi, I, I've lost my voice and I can't talk. Sorry.
Okay. Um, so I'll go to the next speaker then. Um, Rosemary?
Diana Caswell, you have been unmuted.
Hello?
Oh, hi.
Hi, my name is Diane Caswell. I am the co-owner of one seven three five Dundas Street East. Um, my family has lived in this neighborhood and our house has been owned since nineteen thirty-one by our family, so we're into the third generation. I also know the Darbys who are in the bungalow affected next door to this property, um, have been there, I think, as long as we have, so they're into, I believe, their fourth generation. Um, I'm not going to speak so much as to all the opposition that has gone on. I am in complete agreement with all the, um, other residents who have, uh, opposed to this build. This house, um, and my background on, of living in this neighborhood, uh, was once Apple Grove Avenue. It was created to Dundas back, I believe, in nineteen fifty-five. I have been there and watched, um, how the neighborhood has changed over all the many years. It is a completely residential area. We have, we have, used to have at one time two lanes running through. That variance was changed and made into bike lanes. There isn't enough, um, paid parking permit availability in this neighborhood for such a build. I'm sorry, but the vision that the, uh, architect has for this does not fit within the neighborhood. I would love to understand how seventeen twenty-four, um, and this siding to it on a semi-detached house would even have the noise level, the, there's so many things wrong with this build. Um, it doesn't fit the neighborhood at all. And from my perspective of growing up in this neighborhood, residing in this neighborhood, and knowing some of the people who have already, um, opposed to this, I mean, complete agreement that this build should not proceed. Um, this house was owned by, uh, a pedophile at one time for twenty-something years, and whoever bought it out after that has tried to, um, convert it in multiple ways. And I am in complete disagreement. This will completely, uh, ruin, uh, the bungalow next door that Mr. and Mrs. Darby own. Um, the shadowing, um, the impact to noise, the impact to privacy is significant as well for seventeen twenty-four and the house, uh, twenty-seven Hurdle. It's just going to be a monstrosity in our neighborhood, and I can't support this build whatsoever. Um, and I believe that the other significant impact is, uh, many people have stated already, the build is coming out onto the soft land. There isn't enough space there for accessibility for anyone, for strollers, for people with wheelchairs or, uh, scooters, which constantly come along Dundas. It also has an impact for children, um, coming across from the north that are going to Duke of Knaut Public School, um, which is just south of us. They cross at the crosswalk, just at the end of that block. So I think you're, you're making something that isn't going to fit in this neighborhood, and it's causing undue stress and, um, infringement upon the people who live here. Not to mention, uh, timing on the build, noise on the build, construction crews. We don't have the footprint to accommodate something of this, of this magnitude, and it does not fit within the, um, neighborhood view of how all these houses are done. There are singular, uh, bungalows and they are sing- and two stories. They are single-family homes for the majority. There may be one or two that have, um, possibly, uh, sectioned off for an apartment. But other than that, five people designated in this type of setting is not the norm, uh, in this neighborhood. And I just want to state that, um, given the number of years that I have presided, as well as one of my neighbors who unfortunately isn't going to be on this call today that lives directly across from this, um, she's, her family has owned her house, um, just as long as my family has owned my house, if not longer. So I think that we can't, we can't agree to this at all. It's, it's just does not fit the neighborhood and the infringement and things that would result if this build is approved would add further detriment to our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions for the speaker or panel members? Seeing none? Okay, thank you, Diana. Do you have Rosemary Ash?
Through you, Madam Chair. I tried contacting Rosemary Ash, uh, seven fifty-one, uh, Dundas, and, uh, they did not respond.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Rice?
Yes, Madam Chair.
All right, um, if you can respond to the, um, the comments made by the objectors, and you have five minutes, we'll start the clock now. And is there anything else you need up on the screen for this, or are you just?
Uh, I'm pleased simply to speak. Thank you. Um, I'll, I'll do my best to cover as many of those as I can. With respect to infrastructure and fire protection, uh, we will absolutely be upgrading services for this project. Uh, there is adequate servicing in the area for the project. I'll also note that, uh, new, a new party wall will not only have fire, but also sound attenuation requirements that should improve the separation between the attached neighbor. Um, so we actually expect this to be, uh, an improvement over the existing condition. Uh, someone mentioned that this would be a rooming house. That is a defined term, and I just want to be clear that this will not be a rooming house. These are separate units for long-term tenants. Um, uh, there were a few mentions of semi-detached homes and non-corner lots not being suitable for this type of project. Uh, as a matter of fact, every person that just spoke has entitlements for an apartment building on their site. Literally every site in the immediate vicinity has an unlimited number of units that are available for them to construct, uh, on their properties. Uh, the fact that this is on a major street and is close to a corner, I think, improves the condition over what you would typically find in the area for a project that would also be allowed on the internal streets. Um, with respect to community engagement, uh, you know, we're sorry we couldn't speak to everyone directly. We certainly had meetings with a few neighbors who did reach out to us, so the canvassing did seem to be effective for the most part. Uh, and certainly collaboration will not stop after this. Keeping in touch with especially the detached neighbor to ensure construction details and even things like finishes are mutually acceptable is something we intend to pursue. Um, there were, there was a mention of FSI being high on the site. Uh, as I noted, there are several decisions for substantially higher, uh, projects, like well over two times FSI. I'll also note that our proposal complies with all requirements for setbacks, front, rear, and side, as well as building depth and length. And like I mentioned, we're only four inches above the permitted height. So, uh, while FSI may seem high, the form of the building is absolutely something that is compliant with the bylaws. And, uh, I'll finalize just by going back to the councillor's letter. Uh, I, we certainly agree with the councillor's concerns and worked with, uh, her office and the planning department so that the conditions recommended in the planning report would be something that would reinforce the councillor's concerns and I think the concerns of many neighbors. Uh, we did collaborate with them in our design process to ensure that we had things like setbacks and solid guards to protect privacy, overlook, and other issues that were brought up to us. And we believe that including those conditions as part of this approval would help, uh, ensure that any impositions created by this project are certainly minimized and in character with typical development patterns. Um, and thank you. I'm pleased to answer any other questions if the committee has any.
Okay. Mr. Niffel?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Mr. Rice, I, I have a couple of questions that flow from drawing, um, I wonder if we get on the screen, A O dot three, the proposed site plan. I wanted to clarify that I, that I have the correct understanding. The front addition that's shown on this is in fact the space that was originally or currently occupied by the front porch. Is that correct?
That is correct. The attached neighbor has already enclosed their front porch, which is why it's included in their building footprint on the site plan. We are aligning with their front wall.
Okay, so that's, the, the, the front yards are both aligned, the front walls are both aligned. The other question I had to do, where, have, is with regard to the front, um, the front yard on your property. Can you tell me what the landscape percentage is at present? Because it seems that what you've added is the stairway down and the walkway that access to the front door of the, of the basement suite. But, so you've decreased the amount of soft landscaping. What is it currently?
It is currently thirty-five point one six percent or six meters square.
Okay.
And you were right, sir, that we essentially included, uh, building code minimum exit widths and then provided soft landscaping for all other available space.
So the, um, just bear with me for a second. The landscaping that you're asking for is thirty-five point one six instead of seventy-five, and you say that it currently is thirty-something now?
Um, I do not know if that's the case. Um, I'd have to check that.
Because you don't currently have the stairway down to the basement and the walkway providing access to the basement, correct? So that's presumably current landscaping space that's being transformed into hand, hard landscaping.
I would have to confirm that. There is also a side entrance that's paved at the moment. Uh, perhaps if staff can go to the existing site plan, we can analyze that. It is not indicated.
The reason I'm asking the question is it goes to the heart of the variances. One of the variances you need is access to the basement and it's, it's required variance, um, but you also need a variance for landscaping. And they, if you didn't have the access, it's questionable whether you'd need the variance. If you did, it wouldn't need to be quite as large.
That is true. Uh, it is also worth noting that we are beyond the required front yard setback. Uh, this is an unusual condition where the front yard is extremely shallow, um, as is the required front yard setback. Um, and yes, th- there's no question if there were fewer entrances, then, uh, there would be additional lands- landscaping, but, uh, obviously those are in contention with each other.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions? Mr. Bayat?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, to the agent, I, I've just got a couple. Maybe I'll throw them all out at you and you can just take them, um, in turn. Um, one of the, uh, looking at the, uh, I won't ask the same question related to its, uh, front yard landscaping, but, uh, A two-point-four and A two-point-five, so A two-point-four shows is existing, uh, the top of the roof at twenty-six feet, I believe, one inch, if I'm correct. And A two-point-five, which is a proposed, shows thirty-three feet. Would that be correct? A difference of seven feet? And I, I imagine that's because you've got the, uh, the side walls for the deck.
Yes, and make note that is to the top of guard. The top of roof, uh, is slightly less than that above the existing peak.
So there is a, a significant difference visually when you're looking at, from a, from a massing perspective. You've got that additional, um, piece there that, that tends to, um, show a, a, a massing because of that, uh, existing wall that you'll have for, for the, uh, for the rooftop terrace.
Yes, that's right. And we elected to keep the front wall adjacent to Dundas as a vertical wall for a few reasons. One was because, uh, of the nature of Dundas Street. It simply, uh, requires less of a step-in uh, due to the busyness of the street. Um, but also that allowed us to have a more livable unit in the upper level to provide a proper two-bedroom unit. On the rear side or the north, which is on the right of this drawing, where we do have adjacent rear yards and sunlight concerns, we did step in the building both for the third floor as well as the guard.
Um, another question, if I may, um, rear, uh, the rear, uh, the re- sorry, rear yard parking pad that you've got, um, uh, is that, is that material going to be permeable?
Absolutely, yes.
And the third floor rear balcony is a screening on either, uh, mentioned eastern, west sides?
Yes, sir. It actually has a solid guard on all sides.
To what height?
Uh, I believe one point two meters currently.
Would you be okay with the one point five standard?
I would prefer the condition recommended by planning, uh, which, uh, because we're already stepped in from the perimeter and have solid guards, they have requested planters, which we think would be a nicer finish, uh, both for the residents as well as the neighbors.
Uh, are the planters for, not for the rooftop? I'm thinking of the balcony at the back.
Oh, you, the balcony. I apologize.
Yes, it's the balcony.
But I, I would rather not have the condition, but certainly if you believe that's a requirement to approve it, we would accept it. This balcony is quite small and it is stepped in from the side law lines quite a lot.
Okay, um, I think, yeah, just another observation, you know, um, I was looking at the supports for this particular project and none of them seem to be in the immediate vicinity. Whereas the opposition, and there's a lot of it, is from the immediate, uh, neighborhood, particularly all along the side street there. Um, just an observation, I think, uh, um, you know, we, we have to consider what's, uh, happening. The other question I might, if you don't mind, uh, both immediate, uh, adjacent neighbors, I believe, indicated that there has been either no or minimal contact from either yourself or the owners. Is that the case?
Uh, no, sir. We have had a meeting with the attached neighbor, um, and anyone who responded to us, we attempted to reach out to. Um, so I, I don't believe that's correct, no.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Any further questions, Mr. Niffel?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. One other question. I'm confused by- One other question, I'm confused by the planning department condition. Are, are the planter boxes in addition to, your drawing shows, I think, a one-point-five meter screen around the rooftop deck. Are, is, is your understanding that planning is suggesting that instead of the screen you use planter boxes, or are they recommending that you put planter boxes against the screen? Is that my understanding?
Yes, sir. That is my understanding, that those are not shown on the design and would be required in addition to what's currently illustrated.
So they're going to be pushed up next to your, the screen that you're proposing?
Yes, sir.
I, you don't have any difficulty with that? It's kind of a dual, dual solution. What is your opinion on that as a solution?
We worked with planning to review this in advance and we welcome that condition.
Okay, thanks.
Any further questions? Okay, seeing none, let's take it into committee. Mr. Bayat?
I'm, oh, sorry. Thank you, Madam. No, no problem, I'll still go ahead. Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, I, I do take into consideration the very large number of opponents to this particular project for a variety of reasons, some very common threads that go through the opposition. Visually, it does look like a fairly large massing on, on that property relative to what exists, particularly on the east side where you've got a bungalow. Third, third-story additions to semi-detached homes is not unusual in the city area. We've had those happening all the time, so that's not an unusual one. I, I do find the, the rooftop terrace to be a little over the top, to put it in one way. I, so I, I'm, I'm a little conflicted about, about some of the approval. And perhaps my colleagues may shed some light on the matter.
Mr. Niffel?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I have difficulties with a number of issues on this file. I appreciate the architect's challenge. It's not an easy job, an easy project, and I think he's tried his best to accommodate the, the owner's wishes. But I do, I share my colleagues' concern with the rooftop deck, even with screening. The screening makes the building look even bigger and the deck without the screening is a problem because of overlook. I'm also very concerned with the front yard. A number of people spoke about the flooding in the front yard and on the corner and the fact that there is a lot of, there are a lot of people in this neighborhood that are handicapped and require handicap devices and it's very difficult for them to get around the corner at present. Add to that that this proposal is going to reduce the amount of porous material to absorb water in, in this particular area by virtue of the access to the, to the basement, basement unit. And I have, I have concerns with that. I have concerns with the solution for the front yard and its implications on public right-of-way and the, the ability of people to get around safely. I'm also very concerned with the recurring comment that there's been no consultation. When a project of this size is undertaken, particularly when it's attached to a semi-detached home, it seems to me that there is an onus on the part of the owner to reach out and initiate conversations with the people. That didn't seem to happen. I'm unable to support the application in its present form for a variety of reasons, including those that I just stated, so I, I would be open to either refusing the application or a deferral if that would help to resolve any of the issues.
Mr. Clay?
Thanks, Chair. First off, I just want to start by saying, you know, the goals of introducing additional density in rental units into existing neighborhoods is laudable. And I, I frankly like to be able to support projects such as this, which do introduce additional rental accommodation. However, I find that the variances that are before us, particularly the height variance on the front and rear walls, which is three meters over approved, is excessive. I do find, even though FSI sometimes is a blunt instrument and it is something we have to take in context, that the FSI for this site and this property seems excessive. I think that the massing being proposed on, particularly on a semi-detached home with apparent, no, apparently no regard for the involvement of the adjacent semi is, is quite dramatic, particularly its, its color, but that's not the only reason. It is a really dramatic amount of massing on a semi-detached home. I wanted to acknowledge all the folks who called in with opposition. I thought your arguments were quite sound and quite valid and to kind of reflect the impact of this proposal on your well-being and your properties. So notwithstanding, you know, the fact that the applicants had discussions with planning and come up with some conditions, I just find that this application is too much on this lot with too large an impact on the immediate adjacent neighbors and I cannot support it. So I will, I will be recommending refusal.
Okay, I, I just want to say I agree with all the comments made by my colleagues. I think that cumulatively, these variances, it's, it's an overbuild on the site and as was mentioned, particularly because this is a semi, I also think it's, it's out of character for what's, you know, what's in that area. So I will not be supporting this application in its current form either. So I will give it back to my members for a motion. Mr. Clay?
Sure, Chair. I'm happy, I will move refusal of this application for the reasons we've all stated.
And that's seconded by Mr. Niffel. All in favor to refuse the application? Move by Mr. Clay, seconded by Mr. Niffel. That carries unanimously.
Madam Chairman, would, would it be appropriate in the minutes? I agree with Larry's comment about the, the people that spoke in opposition. They were well-researched and, and pointed comments about the application. I think the presentations were excellent and I'm wondering if we might, well, we're noting it now on, on file, whether it's possible to put something in the minutes. I, I really think the people that came out and, and participated deserve some applause. They did a really good job.
Is that possible, Sabrina? Just as a note?
Through you, Madam Chair, we can, we can note it as for the record?
Yep, that's good.
But exactly just that, the residents that wrote in and spoke?
Made, made very well-researched, well-researched comments. Is that okay, Carl?
Yeah, that's great. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. Okay, item number two, thirteen Woodcroft Crescent. We have before us a copy of the plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, and elevations, email correspondence from transportation, and they don't have any concerns. Forestry is asking for condition number three. Ravine was asking for, well, actually Ravine in the supplemental, we're asking to refuse variance number two. And we also have a planning report for refusal report in the supplemental agenda. I am showing, we had correspondence in opposition from nine A Woodcroft, Sally and David Cumming, as well as fourteen A Woodcroft Crescent. I'm showing three opposition speakers and I understand that there's a deferral request. So could I have the agent on the line, please?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members. Ida Evangelista, on behalf of the owner of thirteen Woodcroft Crescent, I am asking for a deferral today. We have been working with planning staff, but to, you know, in such short time, having to do a redesign of the home, it just does not, time just does not permit, so close to the hearing date. So there's that. And also, we would like to have a conversation with our NFP as we feel that the tree will be protected in the back. So I would just like the opportunity to deal with these two departments a little in more detail. And I have also read the letters from the neighboring properties and once we have actually done a, completed somewhat of a redesign of this home, I would like the opportunity to approach the neighbors that have called in and have written in my apologies and just, you know, just review it with them.
All right. Ms. Evangelista, I'm just going to go to my three speakers here to see if they agree with the deferral and then we'll take it into committee for a decision.
Uh huh.
Through you, Madam Chair. I only have two of the three registered speakers in attendance. Monica Mello, you have been unmuted.
Good morning, Monica. Are you there? Monica? Okay, can you go to the next one?
Sally Cumming, you've been unmuted.
Hi, Sally.
Hello.
Sally, can you just confirm that you're at nine A Woodcroft Crescent?
That's, that's correct.
And also, if you've been listening, we are looking at deferring this matter. The applicant, the agent wants to work with planning, forestry, and to come up with a different design and potentially changes to the variances. And then also meet with yourself and other people who are objecting before they come back to committee. So are you okay with a deferral?
Yes, I am, although I would add that I think they should include a full sun study.
Okay, well, the applicant's listening and so she can make note of that. All right, thank you very much, Sally. Can you try Monica one more time?
Monica Mello, you have been unmuted.
Ida, are you there?
Yes, Madam Chair, I'm here.
Okay, just, you, you just heard the comment about the shadow study. I'll leave that with you.
I, I did. And can I just ask one question?
Sure.
You did initially mention there, there were three registered speakers.
Yeah.
One being Monica, second Sally. I just want to know who the third one is in the event that I need to reach out to that person.
Sure.
I, I don't want to.
It's the resident at number eight, Woodcroft Crescent.
Number eight.
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, panel members, let's take it into committee for a decision. Mr. Niffel?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I'd like to move deferral of the application to allow the applicant the opportunity to consult with city departments and affected neighbors and perhaps if, instead of just the people that, that voiced opposition, if there are other people that are in close proximity, she might reach out to them as well. My reason for saying that, if, if there's a redesign, the redesign might raise questions that are not currently on the table and there may in fact be people that are concerned with the redesign. So I'd just like to make it a more fulsome consultation.
Okay, do I have a second or Mr. Bayat? Okay, so motion defer for all the reasons stated by Mr. Niffel, moved by Mr. Niffel, seconded by Mr. Bayat. All in favor? That carries unanimously. Okay, item number three. Eighty, or I'm sorry, ninety-eight King Edward Avenue. We have before us a copy of the plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, and elevations, a tree inventory plan from the agent. We have email correspondence from planning, they don't have any concerns, forestry is asking for condition number two. All right, and only the agent is showing as a speaker. Are you there, Mr. Trotter? Hi.
Yes, Andrew Trotter here.
All right.
Agent designer, or agent, sorry.
Yep, no, go ahead. I don't think we need a presentation. Panel members, do you have any questions? Mr. Clay and then Mr. Bayat.
Well, thanks, Chair. I just wanted to, I have a note in my, in my file to ask about the second-story balcony on the south side. Is there any screening and, I mean, you are fairly close to the adjacent neighbor. I think maybe we won't want to put some privacy screening on the south side?
That's, that's not a problem. Yeah, we can, we can, we'll accept that condition for sure.
Okay, Mr. Bayat?
Question's been answered. Thank you.
There you go, great minds think alike. Any other questions? Mr. Trotter, is there anything you want to add before we go into committee?
I'll just say that last night we got a letter of support from ninety-seven across the street and two verbal support. The, the one lady to the south didn't, didn't want to sign anything, but she didn't have a problem. So the neighbors, we've contacted the neighbors and they're good. So, and planning has supported this too.
Okay, panel members, we're in committee. Mr. Niffel?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. If my colleagues don't have any other concerns, I'd like to move approval of the application. I think it's a very straightforward application. The variances are reasonable. There isn't, that I can see, any negative implications to the development that's proposed before us. Subject to the screening that was suggested by Mr. Clay and forestry, condition number two, I'd like to move approval.
Okay, so Mr. Niffel moves approval, Mr. Bayat seconds with the condition for screening on the south side of the balcony, forestry number two. All in favor? Okay, that carries unanimously. Item number four. Four-twenty Gladstone Avenue. We have before us a copy of the plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, and elevations, five photographs of trees on the property, covering letter from the agents, minutes from previous applications affecting the subject property, and the previous application was deferred and later withdrawn as per the applicant's request and subsequently closed without a decision. We have an arborist report prepared by Brightleaf Limited. We have forestry asking for condition number two and planning's asking to refuse variances one and two. Okay, only the agents listed as a speaker. Do I have the agent on the line?
Jay Smith, you can unmute yourself.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Jay Smith. I'm the agent for the application.
Good morning. Are you aware of the planning report?
I am, Madam Chair. I had quite a long discussion with planning staff on it. If you'd like, I can go over that briefly.
Sure.
Basically, when I presented everything, including the cover letter and the pictures that were uploaded day I see to planning staff, they mentioned that there is basically a blanket policy that they are not going to support projections into the angular plane. Again, you know, this is an existing condition. The footprint is existing and, you know, as per my planning or cover letter, we have a unique situation on a unique lot. The images that I uploaded were for reference, not specifically for trees, but to show the conditions of the site and to show the, you know, basically the cover and the area. We have no real neighbors that are going to be affected. We have a park to the south, we have an apartment building with parking lot to the west and to the north, both neighbors are in support. We did get an email of support from four-twenty-two Gladstone, but it came in after the deadline for submission and no neighbors, to my knowledge, have objected. We have gone up the street and spoken with each neighbor and explained the situation. We will be about two meters higher than the existing garage that's in the images and I believe due to the, the shape of the lot, the size of the lot, and the lack of, of, you know, basically residential neighbors in the immediate area, that we're asking for, you know, minor variances for this application.
Okay, thank you. Let me, Mr. Niffel has a question and then Mr. Clay.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Could, could we get drawing number, number four on the screen? I, I don't, maybe you can explain where this is in, in contradiction of the forty-five-degree angular plane and as part of that question, I note that this, what, fifty percent of the second floor is is basically an open space to the space below, which is a, which is a kitchen area. If that two-story space was only a single-story space, does that address the 45-degree angular plane issue, or is it? You seem to have space here you don't need.
Through you, Madam Chair, no, that would not address that. The area is showing for the two bedrooms is where the angular plane issues come into effect, which is also why those areas have been set back from the ground floor that's existing. We have pushed that whole living space back from the existing walls in order to minimize the impact on the neighbors, but that open to below space would be to the southwest or southeast, sorry, and that would have no impact on the angular plane, we're well without, well away from that area.
The bedrooms, though, could be relocated into the area that's open to below, is that not correct?
They could, with the grades and the things like that, the owners are trying to get some height in the living space, the main living space, the living room, kitchen, things like that, which is where that area is open to below. I believe that even trying to maintain the existing structure, some of that would still be within the angular plane due to the existing setbacks.
Can you show me on the, on an elevation drawing, what area is in, yeah, there you go.
Yeah, we, we've redlined the required setback, which is, is quite large due to the length of the lot. The length of the lot is over the 45-meter requirement to increase all of the setbacks, even though it's an existing structure. So it does mean that we would have to push that angular plane area far forward.
Thank you.
Mr. Clay?
Thanks, Chair. I actually don't have any real problems with this application, but I'm struggling with understanding the, the angular plane issue. I'm, I'm looking at your site plan and it looks like the separation distance between the existing house and the proposed garden suite is, is that 19.56 meters?
That is, it's, it's very large.
Yeah, so, I'm struggling, how are you, with that kind of separation distance, it's a little surprising that you're, you're not meeting the 45-degree angular plane.
We're not meeting that angular plane at the rear and the side, and again, it is the existing structure, we're trying to keep the existing footprint, the owner's hoping to not have to demolish the whole existing building and just top up the existing garage, so that's, that's the reason for that. The angular plane, we're meeting it on the other two sides.
Yeah, right, oh, okay. I, it, it just didn't seem with the, it is a unique configured, configured lot, but, you know, typically when we, when we offend the 45-degree angular plane, it's because separation distance between that and the main dwelling is three or four meters, and that's certainly not the case in this instance.
No, and we are, like you said, it's a unique lot, we are tucked in directly beside the neighbor's existing garage to the north, we do have the parking lot to the west and the park to the south, and that's why I feel that, you know, planning has a blanket requirement to refuse the, the encroachment into the angular plane, but I do believe this is a unique circumstance and an existing condition for the setbacks.
I would agree, and you're overlooking Dufferin Grove, right?
Yes, we are.
Okay, that's great, thank you.
Mr. Bayat?
Just quick, when I, again, I think, like Mr. Clay, I, I was trying to figure out the angular plane issue. You mentioned on the south side, you've got a park, so that shouldn't really be an issue, it's a very unique situation. So despite the recommendation from planning, I personally, in this particular case, I don't see an issue. I do have one question related to a proposed driveway, which presumably goes into the parking in the ancillary building. If it's a proposed one, what materials are you using and would you be okay with the condition that this be produced with permeable materials?
I would absolutely be happy to put a condition for permeable paving. My last discussion last week with the owner, we, we probably will remove most of that driveway and they will both park up near the existing dwelling at 420, so we're looking to reduce most of that, and I would still support permeable paving as a condition.
Thank you.
Mr. Niffel?
Thank you, Madam Chairman, could we go to the survey for a second? I just, I'm still having trouble, as is everybody else, with the angular plane. It affects the north and the west, correct?
It does, and I'm not exactly sure if the front is affected or the east, I'm not sure because of how the property bumps out, whether we're dealing with that or not, I never got a complete answer from the zoning staff.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not gonna hold you to this as, as a suggestion, but if you were to comply with the angular plane, it affects only the second floor, presumably. How much of that footprint on the second floor would have to be removed or altered? Is it, in, in terms of meters, along the north and the east, west, sorry?
If you give me one second, I will find that out for you. To the rear, we would likely have to remove, sorry, sorry, to the north, we'd have to move about three and a half meters, and then from the rear elevation, we're looking at removing almost five and a half meters.
And to the north, you're adjacent to an existing garage?
We are, there's, yeah, there is an existing almost story and a half garage to the north. The property that we have support, well, we have support from both, but the other property, 420, or 422, the back of it butts into the section that bumps out on, on this lot, and then we have the apartment building to the west and the, or, yeah, to the west and then the park to the south.
Thank you very much.
Any further questions, panel members? Okay, Mr. Clay?
Thanks, Chair, I, I think my colleagues would agree, I, I think this is a, a quite reasonable application, particularly given the unique characteristics of the site and its juxtaposition to surrounding neighbors. It is on the existing footprint of the current garage. I, I think we satisfy ourselves, at least I have anyways, that the 45-degree angular plane is not, in this instance, an issue. I think the design is actually quite handsome, and again, given the fact that, you know, neighbors are supportive and on at least two sides, it's open to open areas, I think this is quite a supportable application and a reasonable application, given the circumstances, so I will be supporting it. Happy to move a motion if my colleagues would agree.
Go ahead.
Yeah.
Sure, then I will, I will move that we approve this application, and I think the only condition we have is forestry number two.
And permeable paving, Mr. Clay, if that's okay?
Yes, thank you.
Proposed driveway.
And I think if we have the proposed driveway constructed of permeable materials, that would be great.
Okay, and, okay, so that's motion is forestry condition number two, condition for permeable pavers for the driveway, and what about the parking spot in the back? Like, do you want it just for the driveway or the parking spot also?
Well, I think the, the parking spot is existing, right?
Yeah, that's an existing.
It's an existing one, so I think, but just for the, I mean, I did hear the agent say that they might actually eliminate that driveway and have two parking spots side by each, and if that's the case, then maybe we can make it permeable.
Let me just ask Mr. Smith if they're changing this. Mr. Smith, is it, is the, the parking spot also being pulled out and redone or just the driveway?
Yes, we would be fine to make that all permeable paving.
Everything in the rear, you'd be okay with that, permeable?
Yes, Madam Chair, we would.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so those two conditions then, that all the paving in the rear be permeable, and forestry number two moved by Mr. Clay, seconded by Mr. Bayat, all in favor? That carries unanimously. Okay, item number five, 73 Wolfrey Avenue. We have before us a copy of the plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, and elevations, previous decision affecting the property, copy of a neighbor, of an encroachment agreement with the neighbor at 75, and we have a report from planning asking for a condition, it's in the supplemental agenda. The only speaker I have is the agent, do we have the agent on the line?
Brian Danby, you can unmute yourself.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yep, can you state your name for the record, please?
Thank you, Madam Chairman, it's Brian Danby, and I'm at 32 Beaver Bend Crescent.
Okay, good morning, panel members, do you have any questions for Mr. Danby?
No.
Mr. Danby, we don't have any questions, we're ready to take it into committee to make a decision. I assume you're aware of the planning report?
Yes.
Anything you wanna add before we go into committee?
No, I'm fine.
Okay, thank you. Okay, panel members. Mr. Niffel?
Thank you, Madam Chairman, I have a question for the Deputy Secretary Treasurer, do we need to make a reference in a decision to the agreement, the?
The encroachment agreement?
Do we need to reference that in any way, or can we, can we just be silent on it?
Through you, Madam Chair, are you referring to the planning report and condition number two?
No, there's an actual, it's attached to the, to the agenda, there's actually an encroachment agreement, the portion of this building is on an adjacent property, and there's an encroachment, do we need to reference that?
No.
Okay, thanks.
But the question that I'm asking is the conditions as stated in the planning report?
No, I have no problems with those, I just wondered if we had to reference the other thing.
Okay, but it appears that planning is requesting some revisions to variance number one and the variance number four and five.
Yes.
And if that's going to happen? So the applicant indicated he was okay with the planning report, so do we need to amend it then? Why don't we just amend it? Okay, so let me... And then you don't have to tie them to that report. So we're just talking about the first recommendation to make the amendment, right? Right, so variance number one, the maximum height of the detached garage be limited to 4.5 meters instead of 4.94 meters. Okay, so variance one... And as long as? 4.5 meters, and then the other condition just stays as is, or not? Well, they're requesting zero meters. Where, I'm trying to find it. Whereas 0.2 meters beyond the rear south lot line and 0.08 meters beyond the side east lot line. Sorry, I'm scrolling here. So which variances are we talking then here?
Four and five.
Four and five. Four and five? So I don't know if we wanna get Mr. Danby back on the line and just... Mr. Danby, are you there, have you been listening?
Thank you, yes, I have.
So...
I'm, I'm, I'm behind the, the three comments, thank you.
Okay, so you are amending variance one to 4.5 meters?
Yeah.
And variance? Four and five? To zero?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so it would be as amended then, Mr. Niffel?
Yep.
Then we don't need the report anymore.
Okay, I think with, with those changes that had been suggested by planning, that the amended application is fine and doesn't pose any difficulties, I don't have any difficulty with the application personally, and so I'd like to move approval without condition.
Okay, and do I have a Mr. Bayat seconds, all in favor? That carries unanimously. Item number six, 4 Burt Mount Avenue, we have before us a copy of the plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, and elevations, correspondence from the owners, and in order to comply affecting the subject property. Okay, do I have the agent on the line?
Leo, you've been unmuted.
Yes, hello?
Hi.
I think it's, I'm on the next one, on Balmoral.
Okay, I have you listed for Burt Mount also. Hang on, let me just see here. Okay.
Through you, Madam Chair, do you wanna hear number seven, and then I'll get the agent for number six on the line?
Sure.
In the meantime?
So the agent would be Isma Tula Amiri then? Because it's, I'm showing Leo for number six, so let me just fix this here. Okay, Leo, we're gonna, so panel members, we're gonna do item seven first, so, all right, so for Balmoral, what we have in front of us is a copy of the plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, and elevations, one photograph of the property, presentation materials from the agent, correspondence in support from 96, as well as form letters in support, 23 of them, and that includes both adjacent neighbors at 70 and 74. Okay, Leo, just for your name for the record, and then if there's any questions, I'll go to the members.
Yes, my name is Leo Mastandrea, I'm the agent for the owners at 72 Balmoral.
Okay, panel members, any questions for Mr. Mastandrea? Mr. Niffel?
Thank you, Madam Chairman, Mr. Mastandrea, I do not understand the front yard, and I'm referring to your, I guess it's your survey site plan, I can't find a number on it, and the drawing that really has me confused is A1B, can you walk me through the surfaces? You've got a soft skate parking space, and I, I'm obviously not understanding this correctly.
So, because, because it, the, the property is not, so, so the property line is shorter than the actual parking spot, so, so the, the landscaping is, is based on, on, on the, the portion that is, is on the, their property itself. So there's, there's a walkout, so that's, that's an exist, so most of it's existing, so there's a concrete stair, concrete step, then there's a driveway, and then there's the, kind of like a planter area. So we wanted to...
Okay, but what I don't understand is you've got, you can either use this drawing or the one of the front yard, but I, I don't, I don't understand the surfaces, you've got, let me walk you down the one side, I'm on drawing one, A1B, you've got a porch, and then you've got the porch, there's a walkway to the left, and then there's a bit of green space in front of the porch, beside that, you've got a soft skate driveway, I, I'm completely confused what that means, and it doesn't seem to agree with your site plan.
It's, it's actually turned the other way.
Is the house at the top or the bottom?
The house would be, uh, to the, be to the right.
Okay, that, that doesn't, if you could, can you go over to the drawing A1? Maybe there's, there's overlays there that make it difficult to read, but I, I'm completely lost as to what's happening at the front. It's an interlocking driveway, there's a parking pad, that's on the left side, where...
So, yeah, so the house is based on, so the porch would be that empty area on the top, if you go back to the, go back to A1B? So if you go back to A1B, the, the actual porch is the empty space. See where it says number four, porch?
Yep.
At the, at the top right?
Yep.
That's, so that's the existing porch, then you have the existing... Then you have the existing walkway going down, which is attached to it.
Yes.
And then you have the driveway, which is below that. So we're introducing as-
Why does it say it's soft skate?
I'm not sure why it says soft skate.
Okay, because that means if it's called soft skate, was it included in your lands? I guess basically, all of this is by way of determining whether the variance for, if the variant, if the amount of landscaping that you've got is in keeping with the bylaw, you need a variance. And it seems, according to this, you've got 56.76% and you need 75. I, I don't, I can't, I can't get that variance to match with these drawings. So maybe you can just study it yourself and tell me that the variance is correct, because I'm, at this point, I don't see that that's correct.
Yeah, I believe you're right. I'm looking at it myself as well, and I think there could be an issue, because I come up with 41.74%.
Okay, and if that's the case, then I think we have, the Deputy Treasurer will give us advice, but I, I think we have to re-notify, because that's a bigger variance.
We do. I'm seeing Sabrina shaking her head, yes.
Yes, through you, Mr. Chair, or Madam Chair, we will have to defer the application and re-notify.
And if we do that, we, Mr. Mastandrea, we're gonna need a clearer drawing of how you arrived at the numbers.
Fair enough. I'm just looking at it myself. I believe we had a conversation with the examiner, and he determined a different number, but if we defer, I can correspond with him and get back on the agenda as soon as possible.
Okay, it sounds like that's the best course of action here. Sabrina?
Yeah, that's fine. Just note, we are scheduling now for our July hearings.
Okay, Leo, so the earliest is going to be July, and that's going to depend on how fast you deal with this and get the material back to staff. Okay, all right, panel members, let's take it into committee then for a deferral. Mr. Niffel.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I'd like to move deferral of the application to allow the applicant to correct the variance related to front yard landscaping.
Okay, do I have a second or Mr. Bayat? So moved by Mr. Niffel, seconded by Mr. Bayat to defer this for the reasons stated, all in favor. That carries unanimously.
Good catch call.
All right, can we go back to number six then? Do you have the agent?
Ismatullah Amiri, you have been unmuted.
Yes, hi, I'm the chair and committee member. Do you hear me?
Hi, I'm just gonna read again what we have before us, sir. So we're dealing with number four, Burt Mount Avenue. We have before us a copy of the plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, and elevations, correspondence from the owners, and we have an order to comply affecting the subject property. I do not have any other speakers. So Mr. Amiri, I'm just gonna see if the members have any questions for you. Panel members, Mr. Bayat.
Just a quick one. Could you just speak to why this is to be legalized? When was the structure built and what happened?
Yes, the structure has been built last year, and then they got the notice from the city. It's not completed. It's on, the work has been stopped, so.
I think it just goes to, I suppose, our concerns always with structures being built without permission, and then coming to the committee for approval of it to legalize, and I think that's something I was concerned about.
The owner had a leakage on the roof, on the slanted roof, and then they opened the whole roof, and then they didn't knew about this regulation, and then they did a little bit of work, and then it was stopped by the city. It's not completed.
Mr. Clay?
Just to follow, so was that done, was the work done by the homeowner themselves, or was it contracted?
By contractor.
So I find this is what really bugs me. I mean, sometimes homeowners may do little things, thinking that they don't need a permit and sort of confusion. But when a contractor does this, it's quite clear that contractors know that building permit, and in this case, a variance is required. So it does, it does bug us when these kinds of things come forward. Now, having said that, you know, the addition itself is just sort of an infill from the third story to the rear of the building. So I don't think it's a dramatic change, but we shouldn't be finding ourselves in situations where contractors are doing work on behalf of homeowners without the benefit of a permit, which any good contractor would know that's required in this case.
Can I explain a little bit about this application? So as you can see, this application is for a rare, rare third-floor addition, and we have a problem with the floor space index. There's already a permit for a big portion of the third floor, a permit which was approved in 1988, and the floor space index is 1.39, which is lawfully existing as per the bylaw. And the new floor space index with the new construction that we're proposing is, will be 1.51, which you can see the calculation at the bottom of the PDF. And the difference of which we want the variance is for the new construction, and the difference is 11.6%. But there's, the bylaw, if you see at the top of the page, at the top right of the page, the bylaw allows 9% of increase in the floor space index for the, for the buildings which are built before 1958. They allow 9% increase, and we're increasing 11%. So the difference according to the, between the bylaw and our proposal is 2.6%. So it says very minor, and the 2.6% increase in the floor space index. That's the first variance we are here for.
Okay, any questions? For the agent? All right, let's take it into committee for a decision then. Mr. Niffel.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I share Larry's concern about proceeding, I'm sorry, but a major third-story addition that's been undertaken, and the applicant indicated that they didn't know that it needed a permit. I have that, I have great difficulty accepting that. This shouldn't happen, and I think that there are impositions here to the adjacent owners, particularly with regard to the stair. It's a huge imposition. I realize it's for safety reasons, but there are other ways in which it could be accommodated. We don't know if the adjacent neighbors are concerned with the stair. I, I really don't think that this application should be approved without some consultation if it hasn't taken place. I'm unable to support it in its current state.
Okay, anybody else? Any comments?
Can I have a comment here? Mr. Call's comments?
No, there is no back and forth. Sorry. Mr. Bayat?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think to Larry's comment about, you know, when you look at the third floor from a side elevation, the third-floor addition is an infill, so that in itself is not problematic, certainly not for me. To Mr. Niffel's point about the exterior stairs, I think that's variance number two. I think that begins to become a problem, because you now have the stairs located right on the lot line. So that may be problematic for the neighbor, and we don't have any feedback there. Again, this is, and I know we'll note, certainly note in the minutes that illegal construction is not approved, certainly not by the committee. So I, like Mr. Niffel, have a little difficulty with, I have difficulty with variance number two.
Mr. Clay?
Isn't, sorry, isn't the stairway fire code?
Yes.
I mean, I worry that, in this instance, that, you know, by not allowing a staircase, then it might offend fire code regulations for access. I'm just speculating.
I don't think so, Larry, because it isn't, you're not, you're not preventing the staircase. You're preventing the staircase being installed in this manner and in this location. Yes, it's needed for fire code, but there are other ways of accommodating it.
And your concern is that it's, because it's right on the lot line, that that is-
It's, and it's right next to a neighbor, and I think it's a huge problem. If there'd been consultation and there'd been some adjustment necessary, if there'd been discussion back and forth, that would be fine, but I'm not, I'm not going to support it in its current state. I think it's a huge imposition, and the fact that it's not a proper hearing, it's already done, and we're supposed to put a stamp on it now, no, I can't do that.
Okay.
Any other comments? Okay, I'll need a motion then. Mr. Niffel?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I'd like to move that the application be refused.
Okay, do I have a second or Mr. Bayat? All in favor? Okay, this motion carries, so it's moved by Mr. Niffel, seconded by Mr. Bayat. Application's been refused. Everybody was in favor, yeah? Okay, item number eight. 255 McRoberts Avenue. We have before us a copy of the plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, and elevations, and we have a report from planning in the supplemental, and I believe they're asking for refusal. And I do not show any opposition speakers on this one. Do I have the agent on the line?
Yes, Andrew Trotter, Agent Designer. So we, I got further with planning up until just on the weekend, and I apologize that I did not send in a notice for a deferral, but we have made headway, we've made changes, and I humbly request a deferral to get this sorted out with planning.
Okay. Panel members, Mr. Clay?
Yeah, can I ask you this question? So can you just summarize, what's the issue with? So it's a two-story ancillary building, but it looks a lot like a laneway suite. But instead of being for accommodation, it's for office space. Is that our understanding?
Yes, the owner is a professional artist. He makes his money completely from art, and he's losing his space that he's in now, and he needs a space, and his wife works from home, and their children are growing, so they were trying to make a combined space for her to do, I think she does yoga, and he's an artist, and they were trying to make a combined space for their, you know, their work. And it just kind of, I guess, I guess the neighbors are supportive, but it just became like, it probably was, there was probably a way that we could, in the end, we started thinking as the committee came on, and then certainly with, you know, planning couldn't give us anything, so we thought, well, maybe we better redesign this. So planning did give a complete refusal, but I have since been talking to planning, and we've been working out a solution. We just hadn't gotten to the square footage yet, and that's probably our last little nugget that we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to get to, yeah.
All right, so are you, I don't want to belabor this, we'll vote on your deferral, but are you coming back with a laneway suite or a modified proposal?
No, it'll be modified. It'll be a one-story, it'll be probably back to more of a garage situation. It's not 100% confirmed, but I think that's the route that we're going, that it'll be much more, it'll comply very closely to, you know, what planning's after, so.
All right, that's great, thank you.
Yeah.
Mr. Niffel, did you have something to add here?
That sort of answered, Michael. I was trying to determine what was changing. So the issue is the use, is that correct?
Well, the-
Planning wants it to be more of a garage?
Yeah, they don't want the, you know, the two-level thing happening, and so it seemed like a bit of a far reach, certainly.
Their concern is with the two levels and-
The two levels, yeah.
Yeah, okay, that's good. I'm glad you're consulting with them. That's great, thanks.
Yeah.
All right, let's take it into committee, so on the deferral. Mr. Bayat?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think this deferral issue is quite a straightforward one. So I'd like to move for deferral.
Okay, do I have a second or for that motion? Mr. Clay, so moved by Mr. Bayat, seconded by Mr. Clay to defer the application for further consultation with planning, all in favor? That carries unanimously. Okay, item number nine, Mr. Niffel has a conflict, so 171 Durant Avenue. We have before us a copy of the plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, and elevations, a revised site plan, floor plans, and elevations, a redlined public notice with amendments from the applicant, eight photographs of the property, covering letter from the applicant. We have an arborist report, comparable decision analysis from the applicant, and information sheet on permeable pavers from the applicant. We have a report from planning, and we have 22 form letters in support from residents on Durant. And we have opposition, and we also have a 35 signature petition in support, sorry, from residents on Durant, Judith and Lankin, and Milton. Correspondence in opposition from 167 Durant and 173, which is adjacent. I'm showing two opposition speakers. Okay, so we have everybody. Do I have the agent on the line?
Yes, you do. Hi, my name is Anna, and this is my husband Arbor.
Hi, my name is Arbor Villiers.
All righty, you do have opposition speakers, so I'll need a presentation, no more than five minutes. Oh, actually, before we start, are you amending variances? So I need you to do that formally, because the notice that went out, so can I just confirm?
Definitely.
You're deleting variance four, five, and six?
Yes, we are, and we also wanted to note that we're also reducing the height of the overall building from 9.39 to 9.08.
That's variance number eight, right?
Yes.
Okay, so with those, so we're looking at the application as amended then?
Yes.
And those are the recommendations, I believe, in the planning report?
Yes.
Okay, all right, so if you can do a presentation, no more than five minutes, please. The clock starts now. Is there anything you need us to put up on the screen before you start?
Just the drawings, just to have them ready. So as we go through the presentation, we can point out if we need to, right?
Yeah, okay, go ahead.
It's likely we will not need to, because the time is too short, but have it there. Thank you.
Perfect. We thought we'd just start by introducing ourselves. Hi, I'm Anna, this is Arbor. We're a young family with a property in East Shore. Both my husband and I actually grew up in East Shore, went to East Shore Collegiate, then Ryerson, then York University, and today, we're both in the financial industry. We have a growing family with two kids, one on the way, plus a nine-month-old puppy. So we're very familiar with the neighborhood, and we're here to discuss one- so we're very familiar with the neighborhood and we're here to discuss one seventy-one Durant Avenue. Uh, thanks for reviewing our project. You'll see from our supporting material we sent in, there's actually thirty supporting letters signed from our neighbors and we also have the assistant planning support. Uh, we worked with the assistant planner who reviewed our variances and suggested some of the revisions, so we agreed to them in removing the three variances um and altering the height as previously mentioned. So we're looking to construct a two-story new build with six variances um and to alter and to alter the garden how, to alter the existing structure into a garden suite with three variances. Uh, if I could ask to pull up the supporting photo material, it was sent in on May third. Yep, so if you zoom in on that photo, you can see that corner lot right at the right side is our property. Perfect, thank you. So this will help get a sense of the neighborhood, uh that's our current bungalow. Um, if you take a look at the neighborhood, you'll see uh there's a two-story addition that's built right directly beside us, as well as down the street, you'll notice that there's a mix of bungalows as well as a lot of new builds um in the neighborhood as well. And if you take a look at the second photo, you'll see this is the existing structure that we currently have, uh and we're looking to alter that into the garden suite. Uh, some other supporting material we also wanted to pull up is, you'll see there's an analysis done on the variances that are requested, if you could kindly pull up that document, I think it was sent in April twenty-fifth, beautiful. So as you can see here, um with the variance analysis, you'll see that the variances that were requested, many of them are, have already been approved, if you could zoom in, um if you need to clear photo. So you'll see here, we've highlighted some of the variances we're asking for, for example, um on the first one, you'll see the side yard setback, um we're requesting point seven four, so there's a property right behind forty-seven Lankin, uh that was already granted, so this to help illustrate, if you would like to go into the detail of how um the variances are minor in nature, uh next.
I also wanted to add, uh we basically, when we did our drawings, we made sure that all the variants that we're asking for in the neighborhood have been approved before, so not asking to stretch that because it hasn't been approved in the area.
Um, so what we'd like to do?
Except, except the garden house, which is new.
Yeah, so with the garden house, maybe we could start with that, we'll start with um the three variances and we can help illustrate why we need them.
If we can open up the drawings to page four. Uh, variance one, rear yard setback, ancillary building is one point five meters, we're asking for zero point six-three meters and the reason, that's page four, actually, sorry, I am incorrect, that should be page, just a second, should be page eleven. Page eleven, my apologies. So basically, we need the variance and this variance is only for the second floor because we're doing on top of an existing structure. We need this variance so we can work out the stairs, as you can see them on the right, and that that's why we're asking to be this close. The side yard setback for the ancillary building is one point five meters, here we're asking for zero point eighteen meters, which is the top of the page, the north side, and the reason why we're asking for that is so we can have a bathroom there, a three-piece bathroom, and it helps with the layout and property-sized bedrooms and so on. Last variance for the garden house that we're asking for, we're asking for you live here in order for the bedroom to have a proper height in the middle of the floor because we already accommodated to have angular planes on the sides. So if you were to envision standing in the bedroom, you'd have to stand closer to the center to have a full ceiling height, surrounded by angles at forty-five degrees from the east, north and west. So without the ceiling, it would be extremely low at the center of the dwelling. Please note, we removed all type of the penetration of angular plane variances, four, five and six, as per the assistant planner's recommendations, so we complied. Now, to the six variances on the two-story, can we pull up the analysis document to show that this had been granted, or we already did, I will just pass that because we're running out of time? I'd like to speak in regards to the variances for the main dwelling. The minimum side yard setback is zero point nine, we're asking for zero point seven four. We need this to have the width required for the design. This allows appropriate hallway sizes on our second-floor bedrooms, more bathrooms and separate.
Um, I do need you to wrap up now, okay? You're over five minutes.
So, secondly, basically what we wanted to say in regards to all the variants that we're asking for, they've been done in the neighborhood, um they've been approved. We are asking for these variances because we have a growing family and we we need to use all this space that we can possibly get in this lot. As we're professionals that work from home, we have a baby coming up, we have two kids and a dog, so we we need to use as much as we possibly can. Thank you so much, and I have a lot more to go, but the time's up.
Okay, thank you. Um, panel members, can we hold the questions till after we hear from the opposition? All righty, um do you have the first opposition speaker?
David Leggett, you can unmute yourself.
Mr. Leggett?
Can you hear me?
Yep, if you can identify yourself, name and address for the record, please.
Yes, Madam Chair, my name is David Leggett. Um, my wife and I live at one-six-seven Durant Avenue, two houses south of the property in question. Just a note, I am just saying.
Just letting you know, we're starting the clock now, okay?
Okay, just a note that I am quite disabled and largely bed-bound, so I will do my best to speak about the proposed variances. Now, I need to note that the initial number was twelve and things have moved so quickly that I just realized a few days ago that this was reduced to nine due to recommendations of the planning department. So right off, I'm, I am actually impressed that there was consultation and that things changed so rapidly, but I still have some concerns. Um, the applicants have noted that that all of their variances are reflected in the neighborhood already. I don't believe the garden suite is, it's a fairly new category, and I'm still, I like that four, five and six are gone now, but variance requests one, um two and three, especially the first two, deal with setbacks on the east and north side, I still believe they are far too narrow beyond what's allowed. And the applicants noted it was due to design, but I I would say that I'm not sure that design should drive whether variances should go through, designs can be modified. It is a two-story garden suite and a fairly large two-story main dwelling. In fact, for the main dwelling, I believe the FSI is sixty-four percent over allowed value. Now, this is problematic, it's it's the smallest lot on that side of the street, um that wedge going from north of Plains Road along the east side of Durant, so I know it makes it more difficult, but it's still something that should be considered, especially since this whole area is quite sensitive due to the presence of an elementary school less than one hundred meters away um from the proposed dwelling. My wife and I at one-six-seven rebuilt our house in two thousand and five. We had one or two very minor variances and we maintained the exact same footprint as the original dwelling. I know that standards and especially precedents have evolved since then, but where is the limit? Do we push through the limit this close to an elementary school? Um, I'm not totally comfortable with setting the new, a number of new precedents for the garden suite category of dwelling, especially since there are no other large garden suites setting the precedent for this in our area. This is relatively new for us. Um, but overall, I'm quite impressed with the consultation with planning, so as a result, my objections are relatively minor. I do want relative, I want peace with my neighbors, but I feel that these points are valid and have been worth raising in order to find the best compromise, or perhaps with planning involvement, the compromises have already been made, I leave that to the wisdom of the committee. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Leggett. Panel members, any questions for the speaker? Mr. Clay?
Uh, thanks Chair, uh thanks, Mr. Leggett. Um, you, I I didn't quite catch your address, you're one sixty-seven, so.
Yes.
So you're on the other side of Plains?
I am.
Um, and your concern then would be more about um precedent-setting, because it doesn't look like you'll be directly impacted by.
Um, precedent-setting, but I'm also, as in my former life as a, as a school principal, I'm always concerned about the area and the immediate environment around the school and the precedents especially as as those are affected. So yes, it's it's relatively minor for me, I I don't want to reiterate what I know that the next-door neighbor would like to address.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Uh, can I have the next speaker, please?
Oliver Burkis, you can unmute yourself. Hello, Oliver Burkis, are you there?
Mr. Burkis? Mr. Burkis, are you there?
Through, Madam Chair, we're gonna try calling him in.
Okay, thanks.
Box that has not been set up yet, goodbye.
Okay, try again and I'm gonna go back to the uh to the owners. Um, okay, if I could um see if there are any questions from the panel while we try to reach the other neighbor. Mr. Clay, Mr. Bayat, do you have any questions for the homeowners? No?
No, not here.
Okay. Mr. Burkis, we're calling you now, if you see an American number, please pick up.
Yes, hello?
Oh, hi, is this Linda Burkis?
Yes, sorry, I, we couldn't get through when we tried to do the code of plugging in um the particular, what we were given.
Yeah, we've had technical issues today, so apologies. Anyway, we've got you now, so if you can just confirm, if you can confirm your address, please, for the record and then we'll start, and then we start the clock and you have five minutes.
Okay, fine, that's fine. Um, my name is Linda Burkis, um we reside at one-seven-three Durant Avenue, and uh we've resided there for thirty-seven years. And uh I guess we did send a letter in as well, but we felt with, I mean, we can reiterate what we said in the letter, but it's just, it's the scale of of this um proposal that's a little bit um overwhelming. Um, the lot coverage is permitted is thirty-five percent and they're gonna, they're planning on going up to forty-eight percent. And then the um permitted floor index is, instead of four-point-five times the area of the lot, it's now bumped up to zero-point-seven-four. Um, it, we just find that a bit excessive. At the height, at least, he's come down a little bit with the height, so that part's better, but it's still um the shadowing from this great big thing uh is gonna go into the backyard and um I, yes, there's some sunshine, but then as the sun, you know, goes lower in the horizon, we'll be left in the dark shadow of um of this building. And in addition to the um coverage of of the property intended, you know, there's the issue of, like, where is the runoff from all, you know, they're always talking about having permeable space and green space for runoff and um we're gonna have a, just a cement, cement complex next to us and there'd be very little room for runoff and may, who knows, there may be flooding, I'm not quite sure. Um, the garden structure, there are four windows located on the west side of the building which peer right into our backyard, they can see right into our backyard and the privacy is just lost, like, it's just, it's just what we need to be standing on our deck or in our backyard and have some people that can be peering into our backyard, it's, it's not appreciated. Um, but I guess, you know, there, I don't know what else to say, it's just that it's the scale of this this variance that's, that's a bit daunting and yes, we realize there's been neighbors up the street, actually, it was the same developer that debated, developed about four or five houses on our street, so they had no opposition back then because it didn't, well, it didn't affect us, but the people next to them didn't say anything because they didn't want to rock the boat, but it's the same developer and of course, he's all for it, because that's what he's done, he's, he's made big houses and uh and impeded their right-of-way, or not the right-of-way, but so that actually their houses, they don't even have access to the garage, which we need because, because of our, our, our vehicle and our trailer. Um, anyway, um, that's all I have to say, it's just, you know, it's in our, in our letter and um unfortunately, you know, to have to go through this with a new neighbor is not so great, but we are just um concerned about the size and scale of this thing on the smallest lot on our street, I might add, it's the smallest, other houses are in the larger lot, but this one is the smallest lot on our block and um it's a little bit overwhelming with the the scale of of what's being proposed. So um that's, I guess, all I have to say, and thank you very much for listening.
Okay, thank you. Any panel members, do you have any?
That will be it for me, thank you.
I'm just gonna see if there are any questions for you from the panel, though. Okay, thank you very much, Linda.
Thank you.
Can I have the owners back, please? Hello?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yeah, hi, this is Arbor and Anna.
Yes, it is.
All righty, um you have five minutes to address only the issues that were raised by the people that just spoke, so we're starting the clock now.
Sure, I just wanted to add before any calls that we do not know the developers that she's talking about, we don't have a relationship with them and they're not building our house, we are not blocking it right-of-way and uh we're not disturbing anything like that, and we don't have windows towards this, if you look at the drawings, we don't have any windows towards the neighbor side, so we give them absolute privacy. And our garage is not on their front, uh next to their garage is on the other side on Plains, not on Durant, or our parking pad, rather say. Can I go ahead?
I hope that helps. Okay, so um we have the chance to review the letter sent in from the Leggits and the Burkises. Um, we also wanted to note that we did also receive thirty positive sign support letters from our neighbors as well, so, I mean, we can try to go through the letter and Mrs. Burkis' points the best we can, um just keep in mind, we feel a lot of, the vast majority of the letters, um, sorry, her comments are not uh variance-related. Um, you know, our neighborhood has definitely evolved over time, we hope that the Burkises, bear in mind that they too at one point built a two-story home that was the largest on the the block and may have impacted other bungalows from the front, both sides, the rear, um, you know, we hope that they were able to build a bungalow that served their needs and that's what we're looking to do today. Uh, the neighborhood has definitely gone through transformation, there's definitely new-built homes on here and a lot of the homes are already built with variance relief, which is what we're here for today. Um, the the letter that she indicates, she says our variances are excessive, um we have tremendous neighborhood support and thirty signatures and assistant planning support. Um, if she could kindly refer, refer to the variance letter, um we feel it might help support some of the variances to help illustrate that they are in existence in the neighborhood. Um, starting off with the first point, that we're the smart, smallest lot on the block, that's actually uh not correct. There's also a property in ninety-five Durant Avenue that's twenty-five by ninety, which is actually thirty percent smaller than ours. Um, but again, there's different houses on the street, different builds, different sizes. Um, there's another point referencing how she mentioned that we have a flat or shallow roof, that should be seven-point-two meters. We just wanted to uh mention and let her know that the zoning examiner examined this already and we, in fact, do not have a full flat roof. Um, the height and the proposed uh sunshine, uh we hope our neighbors can see that, uh, you know, they too have a two-story um home, but what we're asking for is relief of point five-eight meters in addition to the height from the variance. The other thing that they mentioned most importantly, should we also mention this?
Yeah, no, no, forget that, skip it.
Okay, um, she also mentioned.
I just wanted to add a point, she said in regards to the FSI that we're asking for a lot, we're asking for point seven-four, there's been point eight-one in the area, approved, and I wanted to add that in regards to the runoff water, we're expecting the sun, the soft landscaping, so we're not asking for variance for soft landscaping. And then I can go ahead.
Yeah, and uh just a few other points here, um that's in regards to Mr. and Mrs. Burkises and in regards to Mr. Leggett, um, you know, we hope that we address some of his concerns in regards to working with the assistant planner. We did reduce the variances by fifty percent and reduce on the garden house, um and reduced variance, removed four, five and six. Um, you know, we ask that the committee of adjustment kindly see the supporting material that we did submit, as well as supporting letter. We did reduce the variances by fifty percent and reduce on the garden house, um, and reduced variance removed, four, five, and six. Um, you know, we ask that the committee of adjustment kindly see the supporting material that we did submit, as well as supporting letters, and we hope that we've assisted our neighbors in trying to address some of their concerns towards why we're looking for these variances today. Um, in conclusion, we recognize our neighbors' concerns, but bear in mind that these variances are indeed minor. Uh, we have already reduced our variances for the garden suite, and that our variances have been, uh, reviewed and supported by the city planning division, um, and we did make those changes, and we trust that our variances should meet the four points of the minor variance, um, test, to note that, yep, the four points are minor.
And I also wanted to add, I mean, we're gonna be living in the neighborhood for a long time, so we wanna have a great relationship with our neighbors, and if the committee suggests that we should scale down on something, we'll be more than open to that.
But we did take the points from the, uh, I believe it was Cameron Shin, the assistant planner, and working with her and reviewing our file, and they didn't address that there were any other concerns in regards to that. Um, thank you for letting us take the time to, uh, reflect on our property.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Um, panel members, yeah, Mr. Clay, do you have a question?
Uh, yeah, a couple. Um, just looking at your site plan, um, your parking spot has an unusual, um, description saying that forty-five percent will be impermeable.
Yes.
Can you just explain that a little bit? Why wouldn't it be one hundred percent?
Because if we did that, we wouldn't meet the sub-landscaping ratio, we thought about this very deeply. Um, this, we would be minus there, so we had to integrate the permeable, allow some grass to grow in there, so this way we could get the percentage of, uh, sub-landscaping at fifty-two, so we don't ask for a variance. And a lot of this recommendation came from the zoning person that, uh, that reviewed the file.
Yeah, I, I get that, but wouldn't it be just as easy to make it all impermeable?
No, this is all impermeable, the, uh, the percentage there, basically, the way I understand it is, some of it is grass and some of it is hard, it's a hard landscape, and it creates overall once you apply it.
Yeah, I'm not making myself very clear. Uh, it, it sounds like a, a, a portion of your parking will be impermeable, and a portion will be permeable.
Right.
Is that what we understand?
No, what I understand is, the permeable as forty-five percent, I believe, grass, and the rest is gonna be the, the block. So, the design, and we have a, we have a flyer, if you guys wanna reference, that explains the percentages for the impermeable supporting documents, this is what we're using, and those were the percentages that we got from using this pamphlet.
Again, I'm, I'm not making myself clear, uh, I don't think. What I'm wondering is, i-if you're doing a portion of your parking spot in impermeable as you suggest-
Yeah.
-why couldn't you do the entire parking spot in impermeable?
Um, we could, we could do that as well.
Yeah, that's, that's what I'm really trying to get at.
I don't know why that happened, I let, I let my designer deal with this, but, uh, if the committee wants changes like that, I can, sure, I can make changes to anything.
Yeah, I, I think-
Yeah, definitely.
-that would be a, a little bit better, it seems silly to have half it, half it in one treatment and half it in the other treatment.
I didn't catch that until right now, I understood it, I understood as the whole thing will be permeable, not just a percentage, but it would look a lot better if the whole thing was permeable.
Yeah, absolutely.
I agree with you, definitely, I did not know that until right now. That's a very detailed point you brought up, and thank you so much for that.
Uh, so, the other question is, on your second-floor balconies, both on your proposed main dwelling and also on your garden suite, the neighbor to the, to the south has raised some concerns about overlook and privacy, um, so, uh, could, would you be able to, uh, put privacy screening on the south side of both those balconies?
Definitely, I've told the neighbors before, if they want anything in regards to privacy, um, we're open to that, if you want to plant extra trees, I'll do that as well, I said that before, and I'll say it again, we did not use any windows on the neighbor's side that we have beside us as well to protect their privacy, we have zero windows on their side, so more open-
You're right, it's, it's not necessarily on the side, but, you know, I mean, there's a legitimate concern about privacy, and I, I appreciate that the balcony on the garden suite is, looks more like a Juliet than anything, but I, I think, given that there's large sliding doors there, I think, you know, something that would, uh, cut down on the overlook to the neighbor next door might be helpful.
We could do that.
Mr. Bayat?
Uh, yes, thank you. I, I, I think, Larry, it was the north side, there's a neighbor, not the south side, because south side's Plains Road, so it'd be on the north side-
Yes.
-screening issue.
Oh, beg your, beg your pardon, yes, thank you, Zaheer, so, yes.
No problem. I, I, I think in general, when I look at the amended, uh, plan, the, the amended, uh, variances, um, and the, uh, general plan of the house and the structure, I think this is quite a supportable, um, application, um, and I, I do thank both the applicants for their, uh, ability to, to, uh, make the changes that I think, uh, reflect the concerns of the community and the planning department. I think it's quite a supportable, uh, application. Um, I think, uh, as, as the applicant has mentioned about the north side, uh, person's concerns, um, there are no windows on that side, and there is a reasonable space between the two properties. I also note that further, uh, further north on Durant, there are a number of homes that are quite substantial-
Yes.
-um, you know, that, and some of them are new builds, and some have, and they're different configurations for the frontage. So, um, I think as, uh, one of the applicants mentioned, evolution, uh, life evolves, uh, communities evolve, and I think this will fit in quite nicely with the, um, the changes that we're beginning to see. I also think the garden suite, uh, given the fact that the garden suite on the south side, um, faces and fronts Plains Road, uh, is less, less, uh, intrusive than perhaps a garden suite in a different location, so I'm quite happy to support this, uh, application. Um, I, as amended, I don't, uh, believe there any conditions other than-
Are you about to move a motion?
Uh, if, if, if Mr. Clay is good.
No, that's fine, so there are no more questions then, so let's take it into committee. Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, if, if, Mr. Clay, you're okay, I'll, I'll go ahead with, uh, a motion, uh, to approve as amended, um, and the only conditions, I think, uh, Larry, you mentioned one, was that the parking pad be all permeable, um, use of all permeable materials, and that the balcony be screened on the north side, balcony on the second floor.
Yeah, the balcony on the second floor of the main structure, but also the Juliet on the garden suite.
And the Juliet, perfect, thank you.
Okay, so the motion is to approve the application with those conditions. Um, the, the application as amended, the variance four, five, and six were deleted, and variance number eight is now to read nine point zero eight meters. That motion is moved by Mr. Bayat, seconded by Mr. Clay, all in favor. That carries unanimously. Okay, I would like to take a break, uh, till twelve thirty-five, um, and then we'll come back and we'll start with item number ten, which is eighty-one St. John's.
Hey, sweetie pies, how's my doggy doggy? How's my doggy doggy?
Hey, Carl, we can hear you, you may wanna mute yourself.
I'm just fine, Carl.
Sorry, I didn't realize it was on.
You didn't know Diego speaks now, there we go. Okay, the next item is item number ten, eighty-one St. John's Road. We have before us a copy of the plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, and elevations, and forestry's asking for condition number two. I show one speaker, do we have the speaker?
Uh, through you, Madam Chair, not yet, we're gonna call them in, um, shortly.
Okay, we can go to the agent, I'm not sure if they're objecting or not.
Angus Skeen, you can unmute yourself?
Hi, Mr. Skeen. I, I gotta go back. Okay, should I have to start over? Okay, item number ten, eighty-one St. John's Road, we have before us a copy of the plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, and elevations, forestry's asking for condition number two. Um, do we have the agent on the line? We do have one speaker, but, uh, we have to try to reach them. Mr. Skeen, are you there?
Yes, hi.
Hi.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you now, um, I, if you can just identify yourself for the record, I'll see if there are any questions. We have one speaker, I'm not sure if they're in opposition or just listening, um, but staff will try to reach them.
For sure. So, I'm Angus Skeen, I'm the architect and agent for eighty-one St. John's Road, and, uh, I can make a presentation, or if you want to, uh, would you like me to speak, Madam Chair?
Sorry?
Would you like me to make a presentation?
No, no, I think we're good, I see my members shaking, but they might have some questions for you, though.
Sure, sure.
I, it doesn't look like there are any questions either. Um, Mr. Nipful has a question.
Sorry, I'm laughing at your comment about you don't want him to make a presentation. Um, I'm, my question has to do with screening on the, um, ground floor deck, second and third floor balconies. Um, it seems to me that the east and west sides of those provide, um, privacy issues for the adjacent neighbors, and I, I would be inclined to, um, put a condition to screen the east and west sides of those three areas. Would you have any difficulty with the condition?
No, I think if you actually scroll through the drawings, you'll find I've got the privacy screens on both the second and third floor decks already.
Yeah.
So, of course, I have no opposition to that.
Yeah, my question was gonna be, would, would it be easier for you if we just referred the draw, to the drawings, or if we actually put in, could, we could either say, um, build in accordance with the drawings relative to the screening of the decks, and/or we could just put in the, the, uh, the deck screening condition, do you have a preference?
I'd like, I think the deck screening condition is probably more flexible for the owners down the line, you know, should they change the size of the decks or something, that's my guess.
Okay, thank you.
If that makes sense.
Yep, does.
Okay, uh, any other questions? Okay, Mr. Skeen, just let me check with staff if they've been able to reach that individual.
Through you, Madam Chair, I have tried reaching Diane, Diana at one four five Annette, and there was no, uh, response to the phone call.
All right, Mr. Skeen, with that, we're actually ready to take it into committee, is there anything you'd like to add, um, that's not in the material that you'd like us to know before we make a decision?
Uh, no, I'm fine, thank you.
Alrighty, panel members, we're in committee. Mr. Bayet. You're muted.
Thank you. I think this is a fairly straightforward and supportable application. And not with any Mr. Niffler's condition with regarded screening, I believe, is the second and third floor rear decks. I'd like to move approval and there's a condition forestry number two.
Okay, so Mr. Bayet moves approval with those conditions and Mr. Clay seconds, all in favor. That motion carries unanimously. Item number 11. 190 Garden Avenue. We have before us a copy of the plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, and elevations, one photograph of the subject property. We have a decision affecting the subject property, committee decision, previous one, and a diagram of allowable building size from the agent, a staff report from forestry asking for condition number two again. We have support from a resident on Pearson Avenue, didn't have a full address. Again, I'm showing, in this case, I'm actually showing two speakers. Do we have both of them?
We have the person in opposition on standby and I'm gonna try to call the person in support.
Okay. Do I have the agent on the line?
Yes, Andrew Trotter, Agent Designer.
Welcome back. I have one opposition speaker, so can you do a presentation, no more than five minutes, please?
Okay, so, the last time we were up, we had an issue with soft landscaping, which now we have no issue. It's, we comply completely. One thing that happened before our last hearing was the bylaw changed a few weeks before the hearing. And actually, if you go to drawing A8, you can see on the north elevation, drawing A8, okay. So the dormer roof on the north elevation, that is actually the main wall height variance. It's not, it's not anything to do with the main roof. It's just that one rear roof. And then if you go to the allowable building size, the one that I sent in, it's individual from the drawings. There's one note that I sent in, it's called allowable building size. It's one of the, I sent two documents. It's not on the drawings. Yes, that's it there. Okay. So that green line represents what we're actually allowed to build with the bylaw change outside of, like, with the bylaw change, we're allowed to build a meter higher. And then if you look to the right on the third floor, you can see that...
Did I lose you? I can't hear you anymore, Mr. Trotter.
I would say that this is...
So, Mr. Trotter, can you hear me?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We lost you for probably a minute.
Oh. Okay.
So I'm not sure, I'm not sure what you missed, what we missed. The last you were talking about what you could build under the, a meter higher, under the bylaw change.
Right.
And we lost you after that.
Okay, so, the roof is a meter lower than what we're allowed to build. There's no main wall height issue on the actual main walls of the house. Again, if you go to the right side of the third floor and see that little angled roof, that's the dormer roof that I was showing on A8. And that roof is still set back behind what a roof, if we had on a slanted roof in the back, we would be allowed to build. The green line coming down represents the building depth that we would be allowed. So, really, this is a very, very minor application. I can't, you know, it's well within the allowable. It's just that our design, we didn't really want to change the design based on what we'd come up with, with the floor plans. And this is what we've ended up with, with, is this, I would say, very minor application.
Okay. Were you able to get anybody on the line?
There was no...
So you can't get Mary Kate, right?
No, I couldn't.
Okay, but do you have Andres?
Yep.
Okay, I'm gonna go to the opposition. I only have the one speaker, Mr. Trotter, and then I'll come back to you.
Okay.
Andres Kirju, you have been unmuted.
Hi there, can you hear me?
I can. If you can state your name and address for the record, then you have five minutes.
Yes, thank you. My name is Andres Kirju from 188 Garden Avenue.
Go ahead.
I'm the direct neighbor to the east. First of all, I just wanted to say, like, I welcome the neighbors to the neighborhood. I look forward to having a great relationship with, with the new homeowners. The house has been pretty much derelict for far too long. We've been there since 2006. We were part of the meeting last time when they brought these plans to committee. Our biggest concerns, we just completed a renovation ourselves and we've, you know, invested a considerable amount of time and effort. And our biggest issue is about privacy and just the overall scope of this. Like, they're adding seven meters to the back. Whether it's allowable or not, obviously, that's for the committee to determine. The hardest part is, this is almost doubling the floor space in, you know, right next to us, which means, and with a balcony on the third floor, we lose all privacy. And I'd say the biggest concern is sunlight. Like, they're adding a third-story building next to us and, you know, having, losing privacy and losing sunlight. You know, it's a tough thing considering we just went through this process ourselves. And we stayed very small in footprint. We stayed very close to the original size of the house. And the other, the other issue I wanted to bring up too is about the letters of support that they have or had suggested that we were fighting over mere inches. It just seems a bit of a slanderous comment to us when we're trying to be supportive. Never once has the homeowner come and talked to me about this or even proposed any discussion about, hey, welcome to the neighborhood, these are our names, this is what we're trying to do. When I did this, I went to every single neighbor and showed them the plans, got them to all sign off on it, and everybody put in letters of support. So, you know, I understand that if this is within the allowable bylaws, that's great. I'm glad that they amended their plans to get in line with what's there. It's still a very big house. It's unfortunate that it'll basically, you know, it compromises our privacy. You know, the sunlight's a big thing. And I know that it actually, it probably will affect my other neighbor to the east as well by how big the building really is. So, again, I welcome to the neighborhood. I want to work with these guys as much as we can. These are just some of our concerns and we'd love to see what the committee thinks. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions for the speaker panel members? Okay, not seeing any questions. Thank you, Andres. Mr. Trotter?
Yeah, well, first of all, this issue about not contacting him in particular is not correct. My neighbor did approach him and he did not have any response before the first hearing. And then since then, he's actually worked, he helped him out in the backyard. I think his garage got broken into. And they, they had a meeting and spoke. The deck, if you, if, you don't have to go back to A8 to look at this, but I can tell you that we pushed the deck as far west as we can to show less, like, because my client would like privacy too. And also, the deck is a requirement. It's not even a bylaw issue. The deck is not, it's not an issue with the bylaw, but it is a building code issue as we need a refuge landing for the third floor. Obviously, being a meter under the building height, I would say that's pretty, you know, I'd say it's pretty generous compared to what could be there. And the other issue is, and this was brought up in the other committee, was this issue about sunlight. All of the buildings on the north side suffer sunlight issues. If this was facing south, there wouldn't be any sunlight issue. Like, this is, this is the same bylaw as the south side you have on both sides of the street, but then one side you wouldn't have any sunlight issue and one you would. And, and again, as I mentioned, we're a meter under the height. And then the final thing I'd like to say, and the neighbor that he referred to that's east of him, there is a photograph that I sent, a site photo, and it shows the neighbor's house that goes really far back. In fact, I'm pretty sure it goes far back, further back than our application. Not, you're, it's, that's not the, there's a site photo, you're looking at the drawings, but...
It's in the, it's in the supplemental, the photo.
Yeah, so, you know, and she came and opposed and, and, you know, neither, neither, both times they've come to oppose, they haven't sent a letter in to committee at first either, where we could have said, hey, you know, we, my, I said to my, my client, I said, have you spoken to the neighbor? He said, yeah, I saw the neighbor before the first hearing and then I saw him again and, and we talked. So, you know, there was plenty of time at that point to have a conversation about the job, which, you know, he didn't really, he sort of did not engage. And then now he doesn't come again with any letter that's saying anything and then he just shows up and says, oh, no one talked to me. Well, that's not, that's not the case. So anyways, I think this is a very, very minor application. It's suitable in the neighborhood. There's, there's plenty of three-story buildings all around. 180 Garden Avenue, I believe, next to his neighbor is a three-story building. There's a bunch across the street. This is a minor application. And I believe this should be, you know, okay.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Trotter. Panel members, do you have any questions for the agent? No questions? If there are no questions, we'll take it into committee then. Mr. Clay and then Mr. Niffler.
Thanks, Chair. I'm not too sure what Carl's gonna say, but I thought this was a reasonable application, particularly given that the applicant has returned from a previous refusal and redressed some of the issues that were raised at that time. It looks like the building footprint is a little bit smaller, which has eliminated what was a rear yard landscaping variance in the past. I will take the applicant's view that the height is within allowable parameters. The FSI is probably pretty comparable with some of the larger homes on this street. And I, if you look at the urban fabric and the housing structure in and around this area, it is very eclectic. There are a number of three stories, both on this street and on adjacent streets. This site is immediately adjacent to the rear of Ronson Vale and some of the commercial and retail activities along that strip. So I don't think there's a negative impact in that direction. The fact that it's, it's close to as of right in terms of the height, I think speaks well to trying to stay within the allowable envelope. And so I think it would not be out of character with the surrounding area and I think the variances individually and collectively are relatively small. And the fact that the applicant has, has come back with a revised proposal that seeks to minimize some of those variances, I think speaks well to their efforts. So I will support this application.
Carl?
Is that a motion, Larry?
I didn't want to step on your toes there, Carl, if you had any comments.
Well, the only thing, I was, I was gonna say very much the same as you. Initially, when you look at the site plan, the extension does go out fair bit longer than the adjacent property. But as Mr. Trotter indicated, if you look further to the south, the buildings, in fact, are deeper and deeper and deeper. And the variance requested relative to building length is extremely minor. My only suggestion would be to put screening on the south edge of the third floor balcony. I think other than that, like you, I'm pleased with the applicant's response to the negative decision last time and in making productive changes.
I think, Carl, I think you were thinking the east side, were you not?
Yeah, what did I say? Sorry.
You said south.
Oh, sorry. I meant east side. I'm looking at a different drawing. I meant east side, yes.
Yeah, I would agree with that. So I'll move approval as application, subject to forestry condition number two and privacy screening on the third floor deck on the east side.
Okay, so that motion is seconded by Mr. Niffler. So a motion to approve with the conditions as outlined by Mr. Clay, seconded by Mr. Niffler, all in favor. That carries unanimously. Item number 12. 26 Calendar Street. We have before us a copy of the plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, and elevations in order to comply, screenshot of resolved order to comply status, a deferral request, which we discussed earlier and the agent wants to proceed, email correspondence from transportation, not expressing any concerns. Do we have the agent on the line?
Hi, my name is Deepak Kuhler. Good afternoon, Madam Chair.
All right, good afternoon, sir. Let me see if there are any questions. Panel members, any questions? Mr. Niffler and then Mr. Bayet.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I have a question that flows from the transportation report. Transportation indicates that you're going to be providing the accessible parking and bicycle parking and that doesn't seem to be in agreement with what we have for the variances. You've, variance number four has you not providing any long-term bicycle parking. Or, so, has something changed?
Yeah, so what happened was, before I submitted my committee of adjustment application, I did the review with zoning and after I did the review with zoning, I updated the drawings. So the drawings you have show, because we have parking at the property, so it was very easy for us to... So if you look at the site plan, no, you had it, you had it right, the site plan, a little bit down. And if you could just make that one bigger. So do you see that the accessible parking spot? We made one, so we have that now.
So, can I just stop you for a second? Are you deleting variances three and four then?
Yes, yes.
Yes, okay.
And are you providing more than the accessible parking or is this...
One accessible parking, one. One accessible, yeah, yeah.
Then you have other parking as well?
Yes, yes, yes.
So the site plan's correct and the variances three and four are off?
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
Yes, yes. Okay, so there's only variance one and two.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you, thank you.
Mr. Bayet, did you have a question?
Yeah, just to those two variances, could you just speak to those? I imagine most of them are probably existing.
Yeah, so the two variances, I believe they are very minor and they are the existing status. So it has to do with the soft landscaping and the landscaping and they're, they're both existing. There's no water issues or drainage issues. The slope still goes down. So there's no issues with anything that has to do with the landscaping and it's the same. So there's no issues with anything that has to do with the landscaping, and it's the same. So nothing has changed, because there's a shared pathway between our property and the property next door. So that's already paved and that's shared, and the parking is in the back, which is existing. So it's the same, like, there's no change.
Okay, thank you.
So those are the only two variances.
Okay, Mr. Niffel, you have another question?
I do, thank you. The variances for landscaping are pretty severe. I, I think we need to do better than that. Is it possible that you can exchange some of, the parking that's in the back, it's all existing, it's already paved?
Yes, yes.
Is it possible, some, some of that can be exchanged for permeable paving? I mean?
What I can do is I can.
One and two are, they're, they're pretty substantial. We, I think we need to do a little better.
So some of the front, I could change, so, as it's not soft in the front. So I could change some of the front to soft, which I was planning on doing, but it's just not on this drawing.
What would it do to your numbers? What's the best you could do in terms of the 23%?
Maybe, I think I would say five, 10%. Because the parking in the back, like, we're planning on making this unit, so we need parking. It's also close to, it's downtown, it's in Toronto, it's close to transit, but it's also close to the gardener, so there may be people who need to get on the gardener and need parking. So we don't want to get rid of the parking space, but if we could say maybe 5%.
In which variance? Variance number, variance number one is a total of, you've got a total of 23%. Does it, are you suggesting you could get it to 28% and then number two?
Well, it must be 10.
So we need both the percentage and the square meters if this is to go forward.
Okay, so why don't we say that, in this case, 23%?
And, and perhaps, perhaps we should see if my colleagues agree with this. I, I think that it needs to improve from what you've submitted in order for this to receive approval.
For the soft landscaping?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so what if we say, could we say, could we up the 23% to 30%, and then the 50% to 10%?
Okay, I'm going to need square meter, meter squared also. So variance one, you're amending it to 30%?
Yes.
And what's the meter square?
So 30%, so if, so hold on, so a minimum of 50%. So if 50% is 216.8, so that would be that, sorry, let me just use a calculator, sorry, one second. Second. So, so, sorry, 216.8, and that would be times 9.3? So I think it would be 65.04.
Okay, 65.04 meters squared. Okay, and then variance number two, you said 10%?
Well, yeah, so that says 108.4, so it'd be 10%. And 10%, so if 50%, oh, no, sorry, so that would be 108.4 times. So that would just be 10.84.
10.84 meters squared.
Yeah.
Okay, so variance one, 30%, 65.04 meters square. Variance two, 10%, 10.84 meters square, and variance three and four are gone.
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions, panel members? Mr. Clay?
Thanks, Chair. I just want to make sure this is, is into the record. You had, you had chosen not to get deferred today because you're having a meeting with planning staff next week. And the subject of that planning meeting is whether you need permission to eliminate the current, I guess, number of units and to allow for what you're proposing. But your, your, your contention is that since it's vacant, there are no units that are being eliminated. Okay.
Definitely, yes. Yeah, so, you know, it's a, it's a great property. It's existing 5,000 square feet, but it's sitting there empty. It was at one point a rooming house, but it's not an existing rooming house. It's been empty, it's been abandoned. The house next door has also been abandoned. So the owners of this property are taking this property. They're creating seven great-sized units from the square footage of around 500 to 1,000, two in the basement, two in the main, two on the second, one on the third. We're creating great spaces, very usable spaces for the city of Toronto. There may have been 16 rooms at one point. There will now only be about 12 to 13. But there was only one kitchen in the basement before. There's going to be seven kitchens. There's going to be seven living rooms. And if there were 16 people there at one point, some of these one-bedrooms will have a couple, so that it, it can accommodate, and it can accommodate more than 16 people. And if you have a two-bedroom, that could be a couple and a child. So I don't think that's an issue, but I think the main issue is something like displacing, you know, vulnerable people who are in a rooming house, but that's not the case. And if that was the case, I think it would be a different story, and then the deferral would be required, but that's not the case. I submitted this application in January. I only heard from this, from planning last Thursday. I did try and call them like three times. I tried to get a meeting before this committee meeting so that I could still have it, because we want to get going on creating these units. As you know, the space has been sitting there for quite some time. The city needs affordable housing, and we're creating that. So I think that it's just the whole, the whole factor that's not even an existing issue for this object.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yeah.
Mr. Niffel?
Is, is the issue that the planning, you, you're going to meet with planning? Is the issue that the planning department might have to or might choose to expose you to the loss of rental housing condition? Is, that's the issue, right? The, the meeting, and it could go one of two ways. Your, your position could carry, in which case, we don't have to do anything. But if the planning department, if their position holds, then you may have to make some allowances for the loss of rental housing.
Well, if you look at the letter, it mostly focuses on, like, there was a letter from Gordon Perks. The first sentence, it's, you know, a loss of dwelling rooms due to the redevelopment to further address displacement of tenants. This is an important city policy. It says individuals who live in rooming houses are vulnerable. They may include households with low incomes, and the intention is to protect these dwelling units, but that's not the case. So it mostly focuses on that. Right, and it's not that they're, they're not, they're, I've spoken with email. They're not saying something like, we don't think it's good planning. They're just making sure, yeah, that's the letter. They're just making sure that, like, it's, the main focus is, if people are displaced, if you're kicking people out, or if you're, you know, which is obviously not a right thing to do, but that's not the case, because there's nobody there.
Can I ask the Deputy Secretary Treasurer a question?
I was, I was going to ask Sabrina also to, that regardless of what, if, if a decision's made by committee on the actual variances, the rental replacement policies still apply, right? It doesn't make, it doesn't change what the requirements would be that planning would put on them for further discussions with that?
Yes, through you, Madam Chair, that's correct. So what's before us today now is two variances that have been amended for landscaping.
If, in fact, the, the, the replacement policy is brought into effect on this, they don't have to come back to committee?
I think then you'd have to go to City Council or somewhere else, right?
I just, I'm trying to determine, if you had to come back to committee, I, for a process, I'm trying to figure out with Sabrina's help whether we need to put a clause in the decision to, to avoid that from happening. I'm really looking to advice from Sabrina on whether or not there is a, a statement, a clause, a condition that we can put in that would obviate having to come back just technically for us to add, add something like that.
I, can I add one question to that? Like, the purpose, does it still apply to the landscape variances? Because I understand the parking spots would be, but the purpose, as it reads now, does that still apply to landscaping? Because landscaping is landscaping. It's not tied to the number of people or units usually, isn't it?
So through you, Madam Chair, on that question, because there's an application before committee, or before the city, I should say, it's been reviewed and all variances are captured at that time. Because this is, this is the time to legalize the property, right? So that it's in full compliance with the zoning bylaw. On Carl's question, no, it's not something that they would have to come back to Committee of Adjustment, right? They're going to have to deal with any of the rental replacements. That's done with policy staff and city council.
Right.
Okay.
Because if that was the case, then you would have had a variance before us related to that, which we don't, right?
And we're not prejudicing the discussion with the planning department by approving this thing, okay? Okay, thanks a lot.
Okay, with that, let's go into committee then and make a decision on this application. Mr. Niffel?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. First of all, I applaud the applicant's flexibility in, in making the changes. I don't see a difficulty in approving the amended application. And I'd like to so move subject to screening the second and third-floor decks on the north and south edges.
Okay. All right, so motion to approve the application as amended with the screening as outlined on the second and third-floor decks. And that is with the variances three and four removed. Variance one reads 30%, which equals 65.04 meters square. Variance two's 10%, which equals 10.84 meters squares. That's moved by Mr. Niffel and seconded by Mr. Clay. All in favor? That carries unanimously. Item number 13, 2738 Dundas Street West. We have before us a copy of the Plan of Survey, Site Plan, Floor Plans and Elevations, and an arborist report prepared by Elite Tree Care. And I have the agent and one person in interest. Do we have that individual? Okay, can we just have the agent identify herself for the record?
Yep. Maggie Bennettson?
Hi, Maggie. If you can just bear with me for one second, I just want to see if this person is just listening or if they want to speak.
Sure.
Through you, Madam Chair, that person just hung up on us.
Okay, all right, so panel, panel members, we have one variance before us. Do you have any questions for the agent? Okay, Maggie, we're ready to take this into committee to make a decision. Is there anything you'd like to add before we go into committee?
No, just that this was sort of a technicality. This was a building that is purpose-built for, it was originally a macaroni factory. It was never used for residential purposes. The current owners are in the process of renovating it for office space. But it's over the commercial allowance, and so when we made our permit application, the plans examiner actually suggested that we just carve out a piece of the basement and call it storage, and then come to Committee of Adjustment to get that storage revised to office use.
Okay.
Putting it over the commercial.
All right, thank you. Mr. Clay?
Yeah, sure. Happy to do this one, Chair. This, I agree, this is a very minor technical change that will facilitate redevelopment of this building along a strip which is undergoing a significant amount of revitalization along Dundas. So I think this would positively contribute to those efforts, and again, I think it's quite modest. I'll move approval of this application, no conditions.
Do I have Mr., okay, Mr. Niffel seconded. So motion to approve moved by Mr. Clay, seconded by Mr. Niffel, all in favor. Okay, that carries. Item number 14, 55 Ossler Street. We have before us a copy of the Plan of Survey, Site Plan, Floor Plans and Elevations, an arborist report prepared by Canopy Consulting in order to comply. And we have a two-signature petition in support from both adjacent neighbors at 53 and 57. I don't show any opposition speakers, and I believe we have three variances before us. So do I have the agent on line?
John Sibinik, you can unmute yourself.
John Sibinik here.
Hi.
Good afternoon, committee.
I don't think we need a presentation. Any questions, panel members? Mr. Bayet?
Just a question too. If you could just give us a little context to the reason for legalization, what happened?
Well, the, there was an illegal one-story addition constructed by the previous owner, and we found that it was non-salvageable. So the current owners wanted to do a two-story addition legally with their own initiative to move forward with a minor variance application after the zoning review identified three variances. So we're here basically, you know, to legalize this proposed two-story addition, which would fit a kitchen nook and a new master bedroom. You know, we, we aligned more or less with the south neighbor, but tucked it back a little bit to accommodate the balcony that's at the second floor of this proposed addition. There's also a setback of 1.77 meters from the north property line. So that more or less maintains the distance between the two, the north building and this property in question. I think scale proportions seem to fit, you know, with the existing dwellings. It's a semi, I believe it's a semi- detached dwelling, or, you know, it's a triplex. A room, sorry, a rowhouse dwelling. It's the middle unit of three.
Okay, just the other question was, you got to the balcony at the back. I think it's, you, you've got it listed as, identified as on A301, new glass garden. Is that the correct one? And if so, if so, is there a reason for requiring screening on, I'm not sure which side, or perhaps both sides?
Well, both sides, that would be into the rear yard if you're looking at it from, to the rear. So that would be overlooking, but that's sheltered by the, the south neighbor's wall.
Oh, I see, okay.
Yeah, so it's got some sheltering there. As far as the north neighbor, I, I think there's like, between the two walls, you're looking at 3.4 meters or so between the two buildings at that point. So it's, I think we, we've got a fair bit of distance between the two, and there is a fence along the property line, and I think the, the height of the building is not that tall.
Right. Thank you.
Mr. Niffel?
Well, thank you, Madam Chairman. I, I, I don't think you answered Mr. Bayet's question. There was an illegal one-story addition.
Yep.
You indicated that the owners wanted to, and it was deficient in a number of ways. And you want, they wanted to take that down and build a two-story. But the question is, you don't just build a two-story building without getting an approval. Why weren't the approvals got?
This was done, this was done by the previous owners illegally. So the current owners bought the property not knowing there was an order to comply on it. So when we investigated further and found out that the addition was, wasn't secured to proper foundations, we realized the building has to come down. So this is a title claim. And so we want, we, we pursued the idea of a two-story addition, not any deeper than the current illegal addition.
Hold, hold on. When, when the applicant, when you're, the current owners bought the property, was the two-story addition there?
No, no.
So they put the two-story addition on?
No. We, we haven't constructed the two-story addition yet. The, the, it was a one-story addition.
You're seeking approval of two stories, Carl?
Yes.
Yeah.
So we're removing.
It's to legalize and maintain, though. So if, if, if it isn't built, then the purpose is wrong.
It, the one-story addition was built illegally.
Okay, but it's, but it's gone, right?
It, it's going to be gone. It's not gone yet. It's still there.
So, I'm confused.
Okay, so the purpose of the application, I, I'm confused because the purpose doesn't say that. And so, thank you for clarifying. The, the purpose basically suggests that a two-story addition The, the purpose basically suggests that a two-story addition was built, and it was built illegally. That isn't what you're telling me.
No, it was a one-story addition that was built illegally, um, and we want.
You're basically gonna comply with the order to comply by knocking down the one story, right? And then you're going to, you're, you wanna apply for a two-story totally new build? So I don't know, Sabrina, uh, can you wanna weigh in on this because?
Through you, Madam Chair, if you look at the order to comply.
Yeah.
In the agenda.
It says submit an application with construction drawings that reflect the as-built condition.
But it says description and location, construction of a rear addition, attached shed structure and second floor en suite bathroom, without the benefit of a building permit.
Yeah, well.
So that's why the notice is written the way it is.
Have you seen the order to comply, Mr. Sibinik? Cause that's what the.
Yes, I have, yep.
That's what it reads, it's, it says that construction.
Yeah, we, we, there's some, there is some interior work that was done, um, but, uh, what we're removing is the one-story illegal addition that was done without a permit.
Right, but I'm, I think we're all confused here because the order to comply talks about a second, like a two-story structure being there. It says a second floor en suite bathroom, or is that inside the house?
That's inside the house. Yeah.
Okay, Sabrina?
Yeah, there's some interior alterations done as well.
Okay, so then through you, Madam Chair, then it could read to legalize and to maintain the rear one-story addition that was constructed without an authorized building permit.
But they're gonna knock the one story down.
And rebuild?
Yeah, they're totally rebuilding if I understand correct.
And it'll be, and it'll be a two-story addition?
Yep.
Okay.
So then, do, do we need to really legalize the one story if he's good? Basically, what he's doing, a lot of people do, the existing is gonna be demolished and he's gonna replace it with a new one. Do we need to legalize anything?
Well, at this point, then we can just use the terminology to permit a rear two-story addition.
Yeah. That seems to be what, what the situation is, that seems clearer.
Okay, that's what we'll, we'll amend it to.
Okay.
Two-story.
Two-story. Any other questions?
Yep.
Alright, Mr. Sibinik, anything you wanna add? We're ready to make a decision on this.
No, I have nothing else at this time.
Thank you, sir. Let's take it into committee, panel members. Mr. Bayat?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I think with the, with the correction and, um, I would say, uh, thank you to Carl for catching that because it was confusing. Um, I, I think, uh, it's a supportable application, it's not, uh, um, anything untoward. Uh, I don't believe there any other, there aren't any other conditions, uh, attached.
Weren't you going to, you had screening as a condition?
Um, I think that screening issue, I think it's reasonably explained unless you think it might be necessary. I think it's only on the one side, um.
I think on the north side, yeah.
It's on the north side, so perhaps we could add that as, uh, some screening, privacy screening on the north side, on the second floor balcony. Outside of that, I think we're good to go with this one as amended.
Okay, do I have Mr. Niffel seconds that with, uh, the condition for screening on the north side, second floor balcony, and the, um, revising the purpose? Okay, moved by Mr. Bayat, seconded by Mr. Niffel, all in favor? That carries unanimously. Item number fifteen, twenty-eight Northbrook Road. We have before us a copy of the plan of survey side plan, floor plans and elevations, one photograph of the subject property, fourteen photographs of properties on Northbrook Road, O'Connor Drive, Linsmore Crescent, DeWinn, and DeWinn Road. We have many decisions pre, um, on Northbrook, Codorna, Cosburn, Derwin, Diep, Memorial Park Avenue and Northridge. We have an arborist report prepared by Green Print Consulting Arborists. We have, um, a staff report from, from forestry asking for conditions one and two. Six form letters in support from twenty-one, twenty-three, twenty-seven, twenty-two, twenty-four, and thirty, thirty being adjacent, Northbrook Road. And not showing any speakers other than the agent on this one. Mr. Mastandray, are you there?
Yes. Good afternoon, my name is Leo Mastandray, I'm the agent for the owners at, at twenty-eight Northbrook.
Okay, good afternoon, uh, panel members, any questions for the agent? Mr. Clay?
Thanks Chair, just looking at the, the, um, urban forum on the street, it looks like Leo, there's a series of two-story, in some cases, two and a half story houses on the street already. How does the height of what you're proposing today compare to, uh, some of those?
Um, it's very comparable, um, if you, um, pull up my decisions, uh, page number eleven on, on the, um, on, on my supporting material.
Yeah, uh, so just looking, for example, at fifty-four, uh, which is two, two houses down?
Fifty-four, yes.
I'm, I'm, I don't have the decision in front of me, I was just hoping you might know.
No, I don't, I just printed off the decisions that had, uh, variances that were similar in nature with the respects to floor area, and some in respect to the height as well. But if you look at, um, number forty-four in particular has a height of nine point zero one. And we do have, um, a supporting, uh, from both neighbors. And we did speak to planning and they didn't have any concerns, and it, I believe it is consistent with the neighborhood.
Well, sorry Leo, I was looking at the wrong number, it was number thirty-four I was looking at, pardon me.
Number thirty-four. I, yeah, I, I do, the decision, for number thirty-four, they just went for coverage. I have that decision, yes. They have forty percent similar coverage to ours.
You know Leo, what would be really nice is if you made a chart in the future. It'd be so much faster for all of us to look at.
I agree. It's a good suggestion, Chair.
Very helpful.
Yes, I will. Thank you.
I hope so, I've been asking for a long time.
So I'm gonna surmise Leo that from just looking around the neighborhood and what you're proposing, that, um, the height, um, of your application today wouldn't be, wouldn't exceed some of the structures that have been recently redone. Is, do you think that's fair? Hello? Did we lose him?
Did we lose you Leo?
I think you scared him with that request, Chair.
Yeah.
Through you, uh, I'm gonna try.
Oh Leo, are you there?
Yeah, I don't know what happened, something just got disconnected. Yes, it's consistent with what's been approved in the area. We have a number of decisions, um, to support that.
Mr. Bayat, you have a question?
Uh, yes, please, uh, to the agent, I'm just, I'm looking at, um, drawing A one B. I'm just a little puzzled by, uh, some of the, uh, identification pieces for area number seven, number three, and number one. So for example, number one says, area number one driveway, and then you've got one forty-three point thirty-two soft. Um, so if it's a driveway.
No, that's square three.
Oh, thank you. This is the problem with aging eyes, and very small ones. Thank you, thank you.
No problem.
Any further questions?
Yeah, I'm looking for it.
Who's phone? Is that you Leo? That ringtone?
Yes, sorry.
Okay. Um, I don't think we have any more questions, so, um, anything you wanna add, we're gonna take this into committee.
Um, just the only thing, we do agree to the forestry conditions.
Alrighty. We're in committee, Mr. Clay?
Uh, sure Chair, I, I think this is a reasonable proposal. It is not, uh, out of, out of character with some of the recent redevelopments on properties in the street and this neighborhood. Uh, I thought the design was, was reasonable and, uh, the variances before us actually are quite minor. Um, so I'm happy to move approval of this application, subject to forestry conditions one and two.
Okay, um, I think Carl.
Mary, would, Mary, would you, would you consider a friendly amendment to screen the ground, the, uh, rear deck? Cause it's a raised deck, it's quite a, quite a number of feet above grade on the north side because it's, uh, it's providing an overview into the property to the north. And the other thing that I thought might be useful is either in a condition or tying to plans, um, Mr., uh, uh, Leo, sorry, has indicated that the front driveway is permeable pavers. I'd like to capture that somewhere.
Sure, if we tie to plans, then, um, the plans don't have screening on the, on the, um, on the deck. So why don't we just make two conditions?
Okay, that's good.
Why don't we just do a condition, uh, for screening, did you say on the south side?
North side.
North side, uh, of the rear deck and that the driveway be constructed of permeable pavers.
Okay, so that motion is to approve, including forestry one and two, the two conditions outlined by Mr. Clay, moved by Mr. Clay and seconded by Mr. Niffel. All in favor? That carries unanimously. Item number sixteen, ten eighty-six St. Clair Avenue West. We have before us a copy of the plan of survey side plan, floor plans and elevations. Uh, previous decision affecting this property and we have transportation correspondence that they do not have any concerns and no speakers other than the agent. You there, Mr. Silva?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and Committee, it's Mario Silva.
Hi.
I'm the agent on the application.
Okay, we only have one variance before us, uh, any questions for the agent? Okay, Mr. Silva, anything you wanna add? We're ready to make a decision on this.
In my opinion, the plans are appropriate and desirable. I'm happy to answer any questions, otherwise I yield my time.
Okay, let's take it into committee for a decision. Mr. Bayat?
Thank you, Madam Chair. As, as you noted, this, uh, we just have one variance in front of us and it's a fairly straightforward one. Um, I don't see any, uh, any other conditions attached. We're quite happy to move, um, motion to approve.
Okay, motion to approve, moved by Mr. Bayat, seconded by Mr. Niffel, all in favor? That carries unanimously. Item number seventeen, sixty-eight Foxley Street. We have before us a copy of the plan of survey side plan, floor plans and elevations. We have an arborist report and tree preservation and planting plan prepared by Cohen and Master Tree and Shrub Services, a consultant report from the agent, one form letter in support from number twenty-two, uh, correspondence expressing concern from number seventy, which is adjacent. Um, I show one speaker in interest, do we have that speaker? Okay, do you have the agent on the line?
Good afternoon, Sean Galbraith, planner here on behalf of the application.
Uh, good afternoon, Mr. Galbraith. I'm just gonna check with the, um, person I've listed here cause I'm not sure if they're in opposition or just here in interest.
Sure.
Okay, just give me a second.
Hello?
Oh hi, is this Wendy?
Hi, this is Wendy.
Hi Wendy, did you wanna speak? Are you opposed to this application?
I'm not opposed, but just interested. I share a lot line with this property, but to my knowledge, it's a lot line that's not impacted by the proposal.
Okay, so are there any concerns that you wanna bring forward or, or are you just listening?
None for me, just listening.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Galbraith, um, I'm gonna see if the members have any questions for you, panel members?
Sure.
Okay, panel members, any questions? Mr. Bayat?
Uh, yes, I just have a question with regard to the, I believe it's a second-story balcony or what looks like a balcony or terrace.
Correct, yes.
Is there, I, I, I think on the one side you're attached and perhaps on the other side you're not, is that correct?
Uh, it's, it's a rowhouse, so it is attached on both sides.
On both sides, so there's no overlook issues or is there?
Uh, it's a once, so it's a one-story rear addition, so the balcony's on the second floor. Um, there, there certainly would be, uh, some overlook and if privacy screens are requested, that is totally fine with my client.
Thank you, I'd like, I'd appreciate that, thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
Any, Mr. Clay?
Yes, Sean, the, uh, the front yard landscaping, it looks like it's in existing condition and the boulevard looks like it's pretty much green anyways, right?
Yeah, it's a, it's a, it's a sufficiently wide boulevard for, for this area. The existing, um, soft landscaping is only nineteen point two seven percent, so this is actually, uh, uh, an increase in soft landscaping there.
Right, and basically it's a duplex front to back is what you're proposing.
Yeah, that's exactly correct.
An interesting configuration of the lot though, huh?
Yeah, it's a, it's a large L-shaped lot. Um, my guess is that, um, uh, Wendy is sort of at the other end of the L, um, uh, fronting on the, the, the next street over. Uh, it is, uh, it is an unusual configuration, it actually has, um, frontage on two different lanes.
Yeah, it is weird, uh, but the garage is existing and staying, right?
Yep, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, panel members? Okay, Mr. Galbraith, I'm not seeing any other questions, we're ready to go into committee. Is there anything you wanna add before we make a decision?
Uh, no, I just would like to note that the, um, the, the owners did consult with both of the adjacent neighbors. Uh, sixty-six has no concerns at all, and seventy, the one that who submitted the, uh, the letter, their concerns were more construction-related, not actual concerns with the variances or the proposed development itself.
Thank you, sir. Panel members, we're in committee. Mr. Bayat?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I think this is a fairly reasonable application. Um, I, I, I don't think there any, uh, issues with it at all other than, um, the, um, agent's, uh, agree, agreement to provide screening on the, I believe it's a second-floor balcony, um, both sides. Um, I'd like to move for approval with that condition in mind.
Okay, do I have a second here for that motion, Mr. Niffel? So motion to approve, including screening on the second-floor balcony, both sides, moved by Mr. Bayat, seconded by Mr. Niffel, all in favor? That carries unanimously. Item number eighteen, one forty-four Gillard Avenue. We have before us a copy of the plan of survey side plan, floor plans and elevations, an arborist report prepared, entry protection plan prepared by Urban Forest Associates, Inc., a letter of clearance from Parks and Recreation, presentation materials and a sunshadow study from the agent, correspondence in support from one forty-one and from one forty-six, which is adjacent. Uh, only show the agent as a speaker. Do I have the agent on the line?
Wanda Ely, you can unmute yourself.
Oh, there we go, thank you. I tried to unmute myself. Good afternoon, uh, Madam Chair, members of the committee. My name is Wanda Ely, I am the agent, uh, architect, acting on behalf of the owners of one forty-four Gillard.
Okay, um, just give me one second, just looking something up here. Alright, um, I don't think we need a presentation. Do you have any questions for the agent, Mr. Clay?
Yeah, Chair, I think the, the obvious one that sticks out probably for all of us. Yeah Chair, I think the obvious one that sticks out probably for all of us is the rear yard landscaping, which is quite light and appreciate that it's probably existing condition, but again, if you're going to be doing work, we wonder if there's anything you can do to quite dramatically improve that.
Yes, thanks for bringing that up. So it is about an existing condition and we have made an effort to improve that existing condition. The existing condition was eight percent and we are trying to add more and we've gone to fourteen percent. We've been in consultation with a community planner, Cameron Chin, who we've discussed this with and they, they didn't have opposition. We also were made aware that the north neighbor was also, just in November, granted variance for eight percent. So we felt like, you know, we were already making an effort to try to make it better.
Mr. Nipful?
Thank you, Madam Chairman, could I, could I look at drawing number, just a second? Actually, no, the one that's on the screen is fine. In your, in the drawing that precedes that in our agenda, you have a parking space that goes into what is now a basketball area and you've, I noticed that you've moved the car out and you've put the car in front of what would have been the garage. Which begs the question, you see where the, where the planting is in the corner, where the tree is? This is drawing number, sorry.
A zero three.
Thank you very much.
So it's earlier, not one oh three, it's A zero, zero three?
A zero dot three, yes. It would appear to me that the basket, where the basketball net is, there's a space there that actually could go to landscape, you see where the green space is that contains the tree?
Yes.
Can you not extend the soft landscaping straight up so that there is a wide band of landscaping adjacent to your rear property line? I, this, I think the current percentage is just unacceptable and we've got to find a way of, no, no, you had the right drawing there, of increasing the amount of soft landscaping in the rear yard and I think there are many opportunities for doing that. You could, you could increase the landscaping next to the patio or, and/or you could increase the landscaping along the back property line. But as it currently stands, I know I can't support it and it would, it would stand as a rather unreasonable precedent.
So most definitely, I believe we, our clients would be willing to add some soft landscaping along the west side by the fence there, as you have suggested. I think that the, the neighbors to the north were also asked to be putting permeable pavers in the driveway section and we'd be willing to do the same along the shared, the shared drive, I think aesthetically that would make sense as well.
Okay, could you, could you suggest that if you were to increase the amount of soft landscaping, how much do you think it would be reasonable for you to increase it to? You've got fourteen percent or twenty-four square meters, is it possible that you could double that?
I don't think so, you can discuss. I think that it might be possible to get to twenty percent, I don't think we can double it. I mean, we are going to be adding a lot of green and doing the permeable pavers in the driveway along with the neighbors. But that isn't necessarily considered rear, but it does add quite a bit of area.
It's not, just to clarify, the permeable pavers are helpful in drainage, but they're not considered soft landscaping?
Okay, our understanding was the portions within the permeable paver that is grass is considered soft landscaping. So let's say if we were to pave a hundred square feet of, with permeable pavers, it wouldn't count as a hundred, that whole percent, I think it's very roughly fifty percent or maybe even forty-five percent would be considered soft. That was in our discussion with the, with community planning.
Okay, that's a particular kind of paving, what we normally get for permeable pavers has pavers actually almost abutting to one another with possibly a bit of sand in between. If there's, if there's actual grass in between the pavers, that's a particular kind of, of paving. I think we'd be more specific.
But if, if, Carl, so if they were able to sort of straighten out that rear landscaping, they're putting soft back there right up to the garage.
Yeah, and the lady thought that that would go to twenty, or the architect, sorry, thought that that would, she could get that to twenty percent, did I understand that correct?
Yeah, and I didn't catch, I think she said a hundred square feet?
Oh, no, no, I was using an example about permeable pavers and what percentage.
And that's where I was getting to, I was going to ask you what, so if you got to twenty percent on soft landscaping, you know, what percentage roughly, or what area would, would you be able to do permeable paving in?
I'm sorry, I'm just pulling up my own site plan here. And this could be straight soft landscaping. So we can do full, like, soft landscaping at, in the back west of the, the tree area. And the permeable pavers, we would want to, you know, as I mentioned, match what the neighbor was doing. And I don't have the detail of if their permeable is one with grass or it's just with gravel for drainage. And I would have to, I believe that the area that has the, the patio would be able to be a permeable paver that has grass growing in it. So I think we'd be willing to say we could get up to twenty percent in soft landscaping.
Well, again, we can't, we can't treat permeable pavers frankly as soft landscaping. So I think what we're trying to do is to satisfy ourselves that if you were to get up to twenty percent in soft landscaping by filling in where the tree is, that's great. And if you were to be able to do a lot of the, either the patio and/or the driveway in permeable pavers, I think that would help us a lot as well.
Okay.
We don't really need to know the square footage, but we, if we're going to approve this and put a condition in, we need to put something in that describes the area that you would be prepared to do permeable pavers in.
Well, let's describe it then as the, the back patio area for permeable pavers as well as the chair driveway.
Okay.
And we can describe the area west of the tree as soft landscaping.
Yeah, so you draw a line from, you know, that vertical line straight to the garage?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Are you amending variance one then to twenty percent?
Yes.
And what's the square meters, please?
What does, what square meters does twenty percent?
Yeah, we need the meters.
Give me a second to calculate that, please?
Yeah, sure.
While you're doing that, if you, if you got to twenty-five percent, all that would do is slightly reduce your basketball court, is that correct? And is it, is it a standard-sized basketball court that you can't reduce or can you not cut into it a little bit?
It's already smaller than standard.
Yeah, I know, but if you're, I mean, I've got sons too, if the kids are out there playing basketball, they're not going to just play where you've got the basketball court, they're going to play in all that paved area. And it's, it's huge.
So, one, give me a second, please, while I do the calculation of how many meters squared fourteen percent is. So I'd like to see on our site plan, I just need to open up an AutoCAD. Thanks for your patience, we're just figuring out the percentage by looking at this on AutoCAD.
Through you, Madam Chair, do we maybe want to move on to item number nineteen and then come back to this one? Yeah, sure, Wanda, we'll come back to you while you're calculating then and maybe you could, to Mr. Nipful's point, can you, can you look at going to twenty-five also? Because there's only two more items, we're way behind on the morning and.
Sure, no problem.
If you went to twenty-five, the square meters would be forty-four, because it's just, it's half of what the requirement is. So that's actually quite easy to do math-wise.
But maybe, Juan, if you want to talk, talk about potentially going to twenty-five, we'll come back to you.
Sure, thanks.
Great, thanks, okay. So the next.
This is where we need to have a game of.
Item is, item number nineteen, forty-five Norwood Terrace. We have before us a copy of the plan of survey site, plan floor plans and elevations, one photograph of the existing garage on the property as well as the neighbor's tree, presentation materials from the agent and we have a staff report from planning in our supplemental agenda asking for permeable pavers on the driveway. Okay, do we have the agent on the line, I'm not showing any other speakers?
Adam, you can unmute yourself.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and Committee members, my name is Adam Brander, our address is two sixty Carla Avenue, Suite two oh two D and I'm the agent, the architect for the proposal at forty-five Norwood Terrace.
You're aware of the planning condition?
Yeah, we consulted with planning and are agreeable to forest paving in the parking area.
Okay, panel members, do you have any questions for Mr. Brander? Okay, sir, not showing any questions, anything you want to add?
Sorry, Madam Chairman, I'm sorry. There's a, I'm sorry, I'm not keeping up here. There's a second story balcony that overlooks the store, does that create a privacy problem?
Through you, Madam Chair, we've located the balcony on the, as mentioned, the east side of the property that faces onto a street.
Oh, it's on the street, I'm sorry, yeah, okay, I, I went through all this while I was doing the review and I didn't put a note down, thanks very much.
Alrighty, so we're ready to make a decision, Mr. Brander, I can't remember, is there anything you wanted to add before we go into committee?
No, thanks.
All right, panel members, we're in committee. Mr. Bayat?
Thank you, Madam Chair, I think this is a fairly straightforward application and I think the concerns that popped up for me as well was the two parking pads, but the planning condition addresses that issue. So pardon me. So I don't believe any other conditions attached to this one. I'd like to move motion to approve for the planning condition as the only, only condition.
Okay, motion to approve the application with the conditions in the May second planning report for permeable pavers, moved by Mr. Bayat, seconded by Mr. Nipful, all in favor? That carries unanimously, okay, item number twenty, one twenty-two Wells Street. We have before us a copy of the plan of survey, site plan, floor plans and elevations, revised site plan, floor plans and elevations, a covering letter from the agent, tree protection plan prepared by Denegri Besai Studio and three form letters in support. And that includes both adjacent neighbors at one twenty and one twenty-four Wells Street and one fifty-four Albany. Okay, only show the agent as a speaker. Do I have the agent on the line?
Maria, you can unmute yourself.
Hi Maria, are you there?
Yep, can you hear me?
Yep, I can, if you can just identify yourself for the record and then I'll see if the members have any questions.
Yes, Madam Chair, my name is Maria Denegri, I'm the architect and agent for the application.
Okay, panel members, do you have any questions? Mr. Bayat?
Yeah, just the, if you could just quickly address number four. Variance number four, the front yard soft landscaping, is that an existing condition or?
The existing, let me, I'm just getting to the front yard. Yeah, the existing condition for front yard landscaping is actually seventeen point one square meters. We are decreasing it slightly because what we are proposing to do is just push the extent of the front porch forward a little bit. There's a modification proposed to the existing bay window which squares it off in an attempt to give the homeowner a little bit more usable space in the front room. And by doing so, what we've done is push the front guard of the front porch forward so that it is flush with the extent of the existing front steps. In the cover letter that I sent, the photograph of the existing condition and the model photo of, and the render of what we were proposing to do attempts to identify this condition.
And the zero percent for the rear yard?
I thought that would come up. Given the kind of, yeah, nature of the discussion thus far, that is an existing condition. And it is, if you've seen the property through the survey and the aerial photos and the renders that we have provided, it is a modest patio at best, it's a courtyard, not a rear yard. It's about a hundred square feet between the house and the garage. And in fact, it's, it's not paved with asphalt or concrete, it's actually paver. So based on Carl's definition of permeable pavers, that's what it would be currently.
Thank you, thanks.
Any further, Mr. Clay?
Yeah, no, just, just want to clarify that point. People sometimes have different interpretations what permeable is, so the old-school way is just putting pavers down and putting sand underneath and in between, which doesn't allow water percolation. The pavers that Carl and I often refer to typically have a little bit of a space in between them and have H P B or quarter inch crushed gravel in between that does allow water to percolate through, is that what you have?
They do, no, it's, they're pavers, they are, there's gaps in between them right now and they've been there for quite a while, so you do have a fair bit of moss and weeds that are growing in between the pavers, but I do not think that they, they are as per your definition. I mean, enough of a gap between them that they would have gravel.
Yeah, so given that you're going to be doing a fair amount of work, would it be unreasonable to lift those and put permeable ones in? I mean, zero percent, even though it is modest and totally get it, but zero percent is hard for the committee to authorize.
Right, no, I understand. I did, I spoke to the client ahead of the meeting suggesting that this would likely come up as a question that would be put forward. One possibility we discussed was removing some of those pavers particularly along the property line with the adjacent neighbor and planting that area out so that we would actually introduce a modest amount of soft scape. And then, yes, I think of course the, the owner would be amenable to replacing the pavers with what is defined as a permeable paver.
That would be great, so if you were going to put soft back there, do you have a sense of what
I, um.
The percentage would be?
Yeah, I suggested, because the garage is, is an interesting structure, he does have doors that open out to that patio, so when he pulls the car out, the kids can play in a little bit more space. It's, it would be about two meters squared, so it would really be a kind of, you know, about a twenty-four inch wide. So it would really be a kind of, you know, about a 24-inch wide space that would run parallel to the property line. I think the best diagram would be to go to the site plan, A000.
So in percent-wise, what are you looking at? And is this kind of the final amount? Because if you want to massage that more, then I would like to go back to the other item that they're calculating and let you calculate while I go back to them. Right?
No, I can do that. So 2.5 meters is, let me just, and what was the, if I can go back to my, give me one second because the CAD file is right here. So it's basically 5%.
So variance number six is going to go to 5%, right?
Soft scape, yeah.
And then, and what's the meter square you said?
2 meters squared.
Okay. That's the best you can do, right?
Yes, at this moment, yes, that's the best I can do.
Okay. Any other questions, panel members? Okay, if there are no questions, we'll take it into committee. Anything you want to add, Maria, before we go into committee? And then you'll be pulling up those paving stones, right? And putting permeable?
Yes.
In the rear, okay.
No, I mean, the committee just put forward a question or two regarding existing soft scape percentages. I'm hoping that my cover letter pertaining to the third-floor addition was clear in our client's intent to be respectful of the neighborhood character. Really, what was put forward in front of you today was a proposal for a third-floor addition, right? So.
Yep, your letter was good.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I see one more hand up.
Do you have another question?
Just a quick one. I was just trying to find a drawing that showed the third-floor balcony. Just wondering if there's overlook issues that we might want to address while we're here.
Yeah, so we took a look at that very closely. The third-floor balcony is actually contained within the overall roof form. So it is, it's a corner property, right? So you're overlooking at an angle Albany. And then you would have, I guess, if you were looking out your back window, a full view of the neighbor at the rear of the property. But there's no windows on that side of the house. Now, the potential overlooking to the adjacent property would be very difficult. You'd have to like really lean over your balcony guard. And then there's actually quite a bit of, there's a significant full-grown tree in the neighboring property, which would go quite far in producing the privacy that neighbor might need.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, if there are no more questions, we'll take it into committee. Mr. Bayat, I think had his hand up first.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think the applicant has been fairly reasonable in trying to at least accommodate the soft landscaping in the rear. It's always difficult with these situations where it's very existing conditions. I don't believe in any other conditions. This is an amended application now. So I'd like to move for approval as amended of this application, no other conditions.
And the rear permeable pavers?
And the perme, so the rear permeable pavers. All right, so the motion is to approve the application, amending variance six to 5%, which equals 2 meters square. Hang on one second. All right, so it's amending variance six to read 5%, which equals 2 meters square, and a condition to change the rear to permeable pavers. And that's moved by Mr. Bayat and seconded by Mr. Clay. All in favor? That carries unanimously. Okay, so let's go back to item number 18, 144 Gillard Avenue.
Hi, I'm present.
Hi, okay, so what happened? Are we still at 20% or can you go more?
Well, 20% would get us to 34.2 square meters. I'm wondering if the committee would support that. I mean, the last one we heard was just at 5% it was supported. So hopefully the fact that we are increasing by another 6% is okay with the committee?
Just to make note of the fact that each property and situation is unique and look at, you know, there's different criteria to look at. So we can't just be comparing numbers. Panel members, did you have any other questions for?
I still think, I still think we need to go to 25%. There's a lot of, there's a lot of area here that could in fact be adjusted and I think 25% is not unreasonable. It's still not a high amount of soft landscaping, but it's not unreasonable for this property. The property you just heard us debating, the only land we had to work with was in a very small back patio. It was a fraction of what you've got in the rear yard here. So I still think 25% is not unreasonable.
Okay, thank you, Carl. I will, we will give 25%, which equals 43 meters squared.
Okay, good.
Okay, 43 meters square?
Correct.
Okay, thanks. Okay, so then we'd be looking at permeable pavers for the rear patio and the shared driveway and variance one is amended to 25%, which equals 43 meters square. Okay, panel members, any other questions? Okay, let's take it into committee for a decision. And so we're looking at it as amended, as I just mentioned. Variance number one, 25%, which equals 43 meters square. And then permeable pavers for the rear patio and the shared driveway.
I think we may Carl do this one.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I think with that change, this is a very reasonable application and I do thank the architect for being so cooperative. I do think that what is being proposed now is reasonable and we would have had a great deal of difficulty with less landscaping than that. The only other thing I have in my notes is the screening the north and south edges of the third-floor terrace, which would appear to have an overlook issue. And unless the applicant has huge concern with that, I think that should be a condition. I don't think from, no, I don't have any other conditions noted in my notes. So with that as a condition, I'd be happy to move approval of the application.
All right, and that's seconded by Mr. Clay. So moved by Mr. Niffel with those conditions, seconded by Mr. Clay. All in favor? Okay, that carries unanimously. Okay, that concludes the morning session. How long do you need? Through you, Madam Chair. Maybe we'll just start the PM session at 3 o'clock? Sure. So we stand adjourned to 3 o'clock. I'll see everybody later and thanks, everybody out there for your patience.